Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole. As we begin, I do wish to recognize that we are meeting on the territory of the South Nation, and we're here today with gratitude. So, council, we are in a committee of the whole, which means that the setting is a little less formal, so we have public input following each presentation, and we just require one mover for each particular motion, there's no secondor. So, and then that's a bit different than our regular council meetings. So, first off, I'll just look for approval of tonight's agenda with the inclusion of the new business or supplementary information. Moved by Councilor Beddoes, are any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, then? Opposed? And that's carried unanimously. So, first up tonight is item number 4.1, telecommunications tower for 5154 Sook Road. So, over to staff, please.
Thank you, your worship. So, the district is in receipt of an application for telecommunications referral for a 45-meter tall monopine at 5154 Sook Road. The subject property has a land use designation of rural community residential and is located outside the community growth area, which is the bold red boundary on the screen, in the easterly part of Sook. The rural community residential designation is an area within the lowest density residential growth, where lowest residential growth will occur in Sook, and is meant to preserve the rural land and agricultural character of the lands outside the growth boundary. The subject property is zoned rural, RU2, and is approximately 4.6 hectares, or 11.4 acres, in size. The terrain is moderately steep, and the property is predominantly treed. The surrounding land uses include rural, RU2, to the north and east, and rural residential, RU4, to the south across Highway 14. The monopine structure is proposed to be located on the northern portion of the subject property, approximately 200 meters from Sook Road, in an area that is predominantly treed. Highway 14 is delineated in yellow on the screen. The OCP contains two relevant objectives related to this application, specifically to provide wireless internet and communication services to the community. This is supported by Sook Fire Rescue, who support this application, as there is a benefit in having coverage for radio transmission and dead spots, and expanding the strength of the paging network. Sook Fire Rescue also notes that the addition of a tower will better provide cellular phone coverage for 911 callers in the vicinity. In addition, the application does meet one of council's strategic objectives to demonstrate leadership in climate action by improving community emergency and disaster preparedness. Policy number 11.4 requires the district to notify owners and tenants within 100 meters of the subject property of the Committee of the Whole meeting. The notification was mailed to the applicable residents on February 6, 2020. Staff have outlined in the report that they believe the notification requirements in the radio communications and broadcasting systems procedures were applicable. Further consultation, which was done the previous two times, this application was before council, did not occur this time, and the applicant has provided rationale. The district's role is to issue a letter of concurrence or of non-concurrence to both Freedom Mobile and to Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada for the proposed tower. That's it for my presentation, and the applicant is here to present as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Machado. I'll turn it over, then, to the applicant, please.
Good evening, your worship.
And if you wouldn't mind just joining us at the table and turning on the microphone, and that way everyone viewing at home can also hear you. Thank you.
Good evening, your worship, members of council, staff, and members of the community. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening and to present a little bit about our organization and about the application itself. Shaw is a Canadian company who got our start and has our head office in Calgary, but is very much a B.C.-focused company. We've got almost half of our employees in B.C., with over 4,000 employees. We have over 1.7 million subscribers to our wireless network, and we certainly believe in community philanthropy and community giving, where we support the communities in which we serve. We have over $7.2 million of investment in B.C. communities, and over $650,000 of that here in the Sook community.
Excuse me, how did you say this on the suit?
Just over 650,000.
Of the structure that you've invested?
No, of philanthropy, so what we've, yes, we've...
Councilor Bateman, actually, and members of council, let's hold the questions until after the applicant's presentation. Thank you, continue, please.
Recently, in 2019, Shaw undertook a large expansion of its wireless network, and we're positioned to be the fourth-largest Canadian provider, offering access to affordable wireless services. We grew by more than 10 communities last year, Sook being one of which, and we're nearly complete our network within the community of Sook. We have one more site, which we're here this evening to discuss. Our new market relationship with Sook provides additional opportunity to bring the Shaw commitment of affordable, quality service, public safety, and a partnership to a fantastic community. It does stand to mention that, on our wire line side, we have over 50% penetration within the community of Sook, and we're very proud and very happy to serve many of the Sook We tend to be a market disruptor from a wireless perspective. Recently, we have seen the face of the Canadian wireless industry change, and prices come down significantly because of the aggressive products and services that we've been offering. Our all-in pricing really does consistently beat our expensive competitors, and to give you a relative order of magnitude, for a family of four, this conservatively could save approximately $80 a month, or over $1,000 a year. And in the Canadian marketplace, we deal and we think in terms of penetration rate. So, approximately in B.C., there's 89% to 90% penetration rate for wireless services and wireless products. So, across the district, this could look like approximately $2.8 million a year in savings. Also, the no-data-overage charges when customers exceed their monthly limit has also caused much market disruption, and pricing has dropped significantly. The incumbents have been raising data overage charges recently, and it's another reason we're very proud to be serving the markets here in B.C. Talking a little bit more about disruption and the catalyst that wireless has brought about in the past dozen or so years, the year 2007 marked quite a significant year, where there was a paradigm shift whereby the number of 911 calls made from a wireless device eclipsed that of a wire line device. So, we really did see that wireless penetration uptake happen in 2007 and beyond. To now, most 911 calls are made from wireless lines. Whether at home or mobile, access to that EMS service is critical, and that reliable, contiguous coverage is that backbone that allows the public to access the EMS. The other thing that is worth noting is the number of people and the number of subscribers that sites serve. One site supports many, many customers, whereas when you think of originally wire-line technology, one line supports one family or one location. It was stated by one of the former ministers of industry, Christian Paradi, that ISED is committed to wireless industry and the digital economy, because it knows the benefits that it will bring to Canadians in the short, medium, and long term. And it just goes to prove that these days, we see many more households are predominantly wireless, and they've actually cut the wire line link. So, one final antenna location is required within the district of Sook, as staff had presented earlier, and this is for the reliable coverage that will be achieved along Highway 14, Sook Road. It's to cover a predominantly dead spot along that transportation route into and out of the district. And we did put forward an application as early as June 2018 for council's consideration. At that time, we were provided with instructions to go back and to look at and to investigate alternative options. Over the past six months, we've undertaken a lot of due diligence researching approximately six alternative locations. Each one of those alternative locations unfortunately met with inadequacy. There was increased opposition and closer proximity to neighbors. We had a lack of coverage suitability, in that when our engineers would assess the coverage prediction from the alternative locations, it did not provide the network with the coverage that was desired. And what we found to be true was that there would be more than one additional site that would be necessary to achieve that coverage objective. There were also significant access issues, and clearing would be required to maintain the access road to those proposed sites. And there was also a very high cost and complexity to providing hydro to some of the alternative What Freedom and Shaw have done is we've gone back to the original location to see what adjustments can be made to be able to better conceal the proposed site's presence. To minimize visibility, we propose a structure to be an aesthetic monopine design. To further shield the visibility by neighbors, the structure and the ground compound, we're proposing to move five meters to the west to be further obstructed by the mature trees surrounding. And to secure and blend the ground equipment with its surroundings, what we are proposing to do is to install fencing and ground cover to be able to better landscape the ground The other thing that we have done is we have ensured that the proposed structure would be available to co-location by other carriers. The other bit of due diligence that we undertook was a drone experiment to look at a viewshed analysis. So, what we did was we flew a drone at the proposed 45-meter height and just above the location that was proposed for the structure itself, in order to see the viewshed from that elevation. Unfortunately, as you can tell, the day wasn't optimal, quite overcast. However, what we do notice was that not many, if any, residences were visible from that area. The study also concluded and pointed us in the direction of moving the tower five meters to the west to further mask the location. Shaw and Freedom is a federally regulated wireless telecommunications undertaking, and we're mandated and licensed by ISED, the Ministry of Innovation, Science, and Economic Development. ISED has made a condition of all of our licenses that we must abide by at all times Safety Code 6. And Safety Code 6 is the regulation that is created and updated and regularly reviewed by Health Canada. The proposed monopine installation will be fully compliant with Safety Code 6 at all times, and in fact, will be less than 1% of the maximum allowable limit of Safety Code With alternative locations investigated and rendered inviable, Shaw is backed respectfully to request the support for its revised proposed site from Committee of the Whole. We believe that, from a public safety standpoint, we want and we are, we're very eager to provide reliable coverage along Highway 14. We want to mitigate the number of sites that would be required to complete the network, and we believe that with this one site, we will be complete. And we want to do it with the minimal amount of environmental disturbance. So, the proposed site, the access is currently clear, and vegetation will have a minimal impact. We also believe that with a stealth monopine design and the placement moved approximately five meters to the west, will further minimize visibility of the structure itself. And we did offer, we extended an offer to the Sook EMS to share the network whenever and wherever required. So, we've made it an open invitation for EMS to co-locate on this structure. And we're eager and we're very happy to be able to provide reliable, contiguous, and economical service to the community of Sook.
Okay, just, if you could just wait there, just, I'll see if there's questions from members of councils. So, over to council, Councilor Bateman, did you have other questions? Microphone, please.
Well, back to my interrupting. 650,000 in philanthropy, what does that look like for Sook?
What Shaw has done is they provided the support to the Conservancy and to the CRD in order to make the acquisition of the Sook pot holes and the parklands. And then they further provided more investment in order to be able to clear back taxes and to make the transfer possible. So, it was about environmental conservancy within the district.
Well, thank you for that.
Oh, absolutely. And we've also provided support to the food drive, and there was one other area that recently we provided a donation as well, but those were the two main levels of philanthropy.
Now, you noted that other carriers could hang their gear on this tower, however they have turned down that offer at this point in time?
At this point in time, yes. Yeah, but again, as a condition of our license, that offer remains open. We must share all of our structures at all times for any applicant that comes forward.
You noted 50% penetration in Sook, i.e., 50% of cellphone users utilize Freedom at the moment?
Wire line. So, 50% of Sook constituents are wire line customers. We've only just launched the wireless network in Sook, so although we would like it to be that high, not yet.
Oh, I see. Right, so, hardwired into the home.
Yes, that's correct. Homes and businesses.
Okay, over to others.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Bateman. Sorry, can I get your name, sir?
Sure, certainly, it's Colin Lavery.
Thank you. Councilor Beddoes.
Thank you, your worship. I do have a couple of questions. You said you investigated six other sites, can you share us where those sites are?
They were immediately to, mainly immediately to the west, so to the west of 5154 Sook Road, and they included the properties such as the YMCA camp, and then the properties that are contiguous to that location.
And, like, there's quite a few neighbors against this, and was any of them their site on their property, or was it other properties?
It was a little bit of both.
Okay. The other thing is, when you had your drone up, and I've seen some pictures of the drone, I went to your site the other day, did you inform the neighbors that you had your drone up, and this is where they're going to be, the height of the antenna? The ones that were concerned? I'm thinking like the Saunders instance, who were in contact?
The landlord was contacted, and I believe that that was all.
I think, sorry, sorry, I think we did reach out to some of the neighbors to see if they...
Can you speak up? Sorry.
So, you'll need to come to the microphone and answer it there, so that everyone can hear. And if you could introduce yourself with your name, that would be great.
I'm James Shaw from Cypressland. We did reach out to some of the neighbors to see if they, to see if they wanted us to come on their property to take photos, but I don't think there was any uptake of that. And then we, so we took them from kind of main, kind of views and arterial routes that where we think, we thought you might be able to see the tower.
Okay, I still have the floor here, but, so, did anybody contact the Saunders? Because that was one site that I'm very familiar with, and they had a great deal of concern. Were they informed that the drone would be up?
I can't answer that specifically, I don't know specifically the, you know, the neighbors that we contacted, but they were one of the, and if they made a comment and they're a neighbor, they would have been reached out to.
Okay, they'll have an opportunity to speak. Thank you. Yeah, that's, probably owe a habit this time, thank you.
Councilor St. Pierre?
Just a couple of questions about the market penetrations. You mentioned 90% market penetration, which would roughly equate to about $2.8 million in savings. Is that assuming you're displacing all the other wireless providers? No? So, what does that actually look like? Because it sounds fantastic, but I'm very curious.
So, 90% market penetration would... So 90% market penetration would assume that 90% of residents had a wireless line or were, had some sort of wireless device in the home. And so if, if folks would move over to the Freedom Network, and they would take advantage of the savings that, that some of our wireless plans offer, the savings could go up to that amount of money over across the, the district.
So is this actually assuming that there's a complete takeover of the market by Freedom or just a certain percentage? I'm just curious.
If you could introduce yourself, please.
Members of council, Dean Price. I'm a vice president with Shaw Communications and Freedom Mobile. The 90% penetration and the $2.8 million indicates an overpayment right now, or an excess payment that the, the citizens of SUK are paying that they wouldn't necessarily have to, whether it's with Freedom or anybody else. It's just to point out that with the network that we have in there, with our services, at that price point, it would be $2.8 million less if everyone was at that price point. That's, that's the intent of that, that, that slide.
Thank you. Well, I've got you both up there. The other question I had was actually about other, other towers. My understanding is that right now, the service that's being provided is basically using different towers that are probably emitting more electromagnetic radiation to make, basically make the jump across, because you don't have your contiguous coverage. Is that actually the case or not?
No, that, that's not the case. So the, the tower has a finite ability to provide coverage, and where it stops is where you begin to see the, the start of that coverage gap, or that inability, or that lack of service. And so currently, that lack of service exists along Highway 14 or SUK Road in that, in that particular area where we're looking to provide the service now. So the other towers themselves, they, they will work just as hard as if there was a site there or not.
Okay, so there's no actual reduction in ambient radiation with an extra tower there for anybody?
Not from a tower perspective, but yes, from a handset perspective.
From a handset perspective.
Because when your handset is searching for network, when there is either no network or the network is scant or stressed, your handset works harder to find the next nearest and strongest signal to be able to allow you to have service. So there will be a decrease in emission from your handset, but not from adjacent towers.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Elajeness, did you have your hand up? Nope. Councilor, nope. Councilor Bettes?
Yeah, just had your...
Just one more question. The Saunders residence is how many meters from the tower? Does somebody have that information? I believe I was told the other day, but I, I can't remember what the figure was.
Approximately...
Two hundred and fifty meters?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and...
All right. Somewhere between 200 and 250 meters, okay.
The closest neighbor was 190 meters away, approximately. What about our next?
Okay, just a second. No, I have the floor, so I, I just had one more little follow-up question. One of the letters said that the city of Langley has a 500-meter zone around cellphone towers where they need permission of those residents within a 500-meter radius. Are you familiar with that at all?
I'm not familiar with that particular detail of Langley's protocol, no. We can, we can research it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Bateman?
I have a big file here with documentation going back to June 2017, when you first came for this particular site. And at that time, council received a report from Forbes Brothers Communications Services, which was fascinating report, covered a lot of ground. I'm, I'm curious, through you, the staff, why we haven't, that's not as part of our package. There's been an assumption made here by the applicant that they've been here twice before, and a lot of their, their materials have been presented ahead of time. I'm just curious as to why we didn't receive that as part of our package.
Through Your Worship to Councilor Bateman, they did submit a new application, even though it's the same one previously considered. This was submitted as a new application and treated as such.
Well, I'll, I'll bring up a point. My decision last year in January 2019 was rooted in property values, and I do note in the Forbes Brothers' report, there was quite an extensive discussion of those property values. Could you give me your thoughts on, on impacts of a, of a cellphone tower for the immediate property values?
Relatively to, to ISED's protocol and their, their client procedure circular, that there, there wasn't any relevance to property values and, and applications, and that we haven't seen a negative impact, but rather, we've seen the positive impact of being able to provide service to local, local residents and, and businesses. So that's, that's sort of the, the position that, that we take.
Just, just a quote from this Forbes Brothers' report. A third of the respondents, this was a survey done in Christchurch back in 2000. The feeling was rent and/or retail value would drop between 1% and 9%. And then there was a rather dramatic, in two studies where towers were built in 2000, the effect of a tower on home prices was a decrease of between 20% and 21%. And I did find some data that I quoted last year regarding a Callwood study where values dropped about, I think, 10% or 8% approximately.
Just a question, Councilor Bateman. That report is from the year 2000?
That was from 2000, yeah.
It was like almost 20 years ago.
That's very true, yeah. So I bring it up because it was part of the study, and I think it's an important point to raise.
Fair, but it's...
It is dated.
It's very dated. Are we...
But so are we.
That's the, how long we've been incorporated as a municipality? So when you think of what technology existed 20 years ago versus now, and what we've learned and expect from it today versus 20 years ago, how we use technology is completely different. I didn't have a smartphone in that time. We used dialogue back then.
Okay, I'll bring up another point, and that's around perceived risk versus actual risk, or perceived understanding by someone potentially buying a home with a cellphone tower there. As this Forbes Brothers' report notes, there is a big difference between what the science says and what people tend to believe about health, self, cell tower risk. So I think that's very much alive, whether it's in 2000 or 2020. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Other questions or comments from members of council for the applicant? And then we'll move into the public input, and then we may have you back just to answer some of those questions as they come up. But I would like to get answers or get some commentary from members of the public that are here, okay? Thank you. So now I'd like to welcome anyone, this is for, specifically for 5154 SUK Road. So if you're here about the building bylaw or the budget, there'll be public input available at that time. So right now, we're seeking public commentary specifically on the telecommunications tower. And we would just like you to introduce yourself with your full name. If you could write it down, that way we have the correct spelling in the minutes. And please turn on the microphone.
Hello, I'm Stephen Saunders from Glenslake Road. Is that all you need for ID? I am here. Okay. Now, thank you very much for the ad for Shaw Cable. I didn't hear anything new from what he was saying. We have found absolutely no evidence that they looked for another tower in the last, another tower location in the last year. And so I don't know where they were looking, because we went up and down SUK Road, and nobody's been asked. None of the people that signed the petition have been asked. So where are these places that they were looking for, a new tower location? We're the ones that are going to accept all the extra RF radiation from this tower. You know, it's, we're the people at risk. Canada has the highest acceptable RF exposure rates in the world at 10 million microwatts per meter squared, whereas a world recommended exposure rate is 10 times, 10,000 times lower at 1,000 watts, microwatts per square meter. So it is with great trepidation that we look at this application for a cell service base station directly in front of our house at a distance of 200 meters. It may be 206, but it's close. And our next-door neighbor's house at 80 meters. 5036 Glenslake Road, their deck is right in front of it, 80 meters away. The accepted international safe distance for dangerous long-term RF radiation from a cell system base station is 500 meters. Most of the countries in Europe, you're not allowed to put a cell base station within 500 meters of a house now. The whole world's changing. There's so much information coming out about the dangers of cellphone base stations. They're transmitting 24/7. They never stop. And they're going from 5 to 50 watts of power, and they're sitting right in front of our living room. The city of Langley has an extremely well-received system of cell tower approval. All property owners and tenants within 500 meters of a proposed cell tower must be petitioned, and approval rate of 80% must be achieved, or the application is turned down. That makes it cut and dry. You don't have to worry about all the things people are telling you that aren't true. You just ask the people, and they'll let you know. The District of SUK should adopt a similar system, which will remove a lot of the stress from the present protocol. Everybody dealing with this is stressed right out. You know, we can't sleep. I had to go to my cardiologist the other day because my heart rate's right off the end. Property values around cellphone base stations have been proven to be affected by their proximity to these towers. Properties can be affected from 7.5% in urban areas to more than 22% in rural areas. The city folk don't seem to be bothered as much by them, whereas the country people are moving out to the country to get away from this type of thing. We, we've lived on that property since 1988, and we don't even cut down trees on it, and we would love for it to remain a rural area. And, you know, being irradiated with RF radiation is not fun. Just, you have to go and look at sites that will give you all that information, and it's a lot of work. I've spent hundreds of hours researching this stuff, and I'm trying to put this in a letter, or, you know, a little five-minute speech. I've already mentioned, we've found no evidence of Freedom Mobile attempting to relocate this tower since their last application, none. It's all about the money. We have excellent cellphone service in this area, all up and down. We don't, we don't lose any calls. We have beautiful cellphone service. Nobody's going to gain anything except Freedom Mobile and the property owner of 5154 SUK Road. The surrounding properties have everything to lose, health-wise and monetarily. We're the people that are going to be paying for this installation. I can't afford to have my property drop in value. I'm getting old and decrepit. I may need some help sometime. There is another solution to their lack of service on SUK Road if they have it, because Rogers, Telus, Bell, they all have great services along SUK Road. Anyway, there is the telephone pole-mounted transmitters. They don't, they're, you can barely see them. I've sent you a picture of them. Did everybody see that? They've got them all through Callwood. You know, that doesn't devalue anybody's property. The other thing we were a little concerned with, we've had no timely notification of this. The notices were sent out on Jan, February 6. We received ours on the afternoon of the 11th, which is Tuesday. We received it after the cutoff period for applic, for applications for the council meeting. I'm, you know, why is that? Last year, we had our property for sale. For a little while, anyway, we've decided to stay. But the people that made an offer on it went to City Hall, and they found out about the cell tower. They immediately withdrew their offer and left. So you can't tell me it doesn't affect saleability or price. It's just a fact of life. Oh, and also, most of the people that should have been notified have not received any notification of it. We went around and gathered our usual 25 signatures from every property owner and tenant within the 300-meter radius of the pole. And like I said, none of them have been asked to in the last year. Neither have any of the people further to the west that they said. You'd have to find the people, because I've talked to them, and they have said they haven't had any approach from Freedom Mobile to relocate their tower. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. Nothing's changed from the last application.
And the previous one had...
And the previous one, too. Well, no, they added some plastic flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. Can I get clarification from staff on the notification requirements, what is required, and then what was done?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. The district's policy requires that owners and tenants in occupation of each parcel within 100 meters of the subject site be notified of the meeting, and that was conducted.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I, it wasn't conducted, because I can bring you the names of all the people that are bordering the property that did not get any application.
We would have record of every property that it was mailed to.
Okay, so our, our staff take our, our mapping, use our mapping system, as I understand it, and then they determine the addresses within that radius. That's what we've done with Telus probably, and with Rogers as well in recent years. And there's been opposition to all of those installations as well. There's never been an application received here that did not come with opposition.
The only reason we've, we're semi-prepared is because we've done this twice before.
Yep. No, thank you, Mr. Saunders. Okay. Other speakers this evening?
I'm just going to very quickly.
You can introduce yourself, please.
Yeah. Just a moment. Anna Saunders, 5016 Glenslake Road. My husband covered most of the stuff. But things that struck me is SUK doesn't really have clear-cut policy when it comes to this sort of applications. This is a third application. I consider it harassment. The last application was turned down unilaterally by everybody. How long and how many times are you going to allow this to happen to us? We're losing sleep. Our health is completely compromised. This is not fair to anybody. I'm not going to put all the blame on Freedom Canada. They are doing what they want to do, what is their business. But we are your constituents. I think there should be some form, very regulation, that policy that makes it bearable. Three times in two and a half years? That's not acceptable. We trust you as our councillors to have our back. We trust you, as our councillors, to have our back. We're the citizens of this community. I find it really disturbing. It's time to sit down and form a policy that is fair to everybody, not just these guys. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. So to staff, for clarity on processes, so, for example, if a rezoning were to fail, as an example, the applicant could return in a year's time and reapply? And if any sort of application of any sort is turned down, there is always an appeal mechanism that exists? If you just maybe answer some of Ms. Saunders' concerns on how that happens, because there's numerous times over the years where different proponents come back for different reasons?
Through Your Worship, I'm afraid I'm not as versed on this topic in to be able to answer that correctly, but I would, the only thing that I would point out is that even though the district is considering the application, we're only providing a letter of concurrence or non-concurrence. And ultimately, the Innovation Science and Economic Development Canada has the ultimate decision-making authority.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Erickson from 5016 Glenslake Road. Like they've said, this is harassment. We're retired. We moved here for the safety and the tranquility and the beauty of the forest. You can't disguise a tower putting a tree on top of it, a plastic tree on top of it. It's affecting all of us. And this 100 meters for notification, we didn't get a notification. I guess we're 200 meters. The guidelines now recommend 500 meters, so Sook Council needs to update their policies around placement of cell towers, like Langley and Langford and other communities have done. This won't be the last cell tower that you're being asked to approve, and I really do think that you have to do diligence and look at the current international standards, which are much more stringent than Health Canada's. Freedom Mobile had a slide up there, and it said they were last updated in 2015. Well, a lot has happened in six years, and nobody has even mentioned 5G rollout. You don't think that they're going to put a 5G plate up on that tower or sell 5G space on it? Even the insurance industry won't recommend policies for cell tower radiation and the effects on it, because it's dangerous, and we all know it. Since we were last here, there have been significantly more studies done proving the many negative effects of radiation from EMF and to humans, but also to the environment. We have 38 species of birds come to our deck. We have wildlife. We have raccoons and, not just the birds, but we're living in a forest with cougars and bear, and even amphibians and insects are going to be affected by this. And it's proven. There's thousands of studies being done, and you can easily find all of them. This large body of research has lately been taken up by 240 scientists who have just published peer-reviewed research on the biologic and health effects of non-ionizing electromagnetic fields, which this is. And they've signed a scientist appeal, which calls for stronger exposure limits to all nations. Numerous recent scientific publications, I have tons here, show living organisms at levels well below international and national guidelines are being affected. There is increased cancer risk, which is now proven. There's World's Largest Animal Study on Cell Tower Radiation Confirms Cancer Link. These are peer-reviewed. These are not just mindless studies. They're by internationally renowned EMF scientists. There has been more than 2,000 papers published. Doctors recently treating patients from overexposure to wireless radiation have just joined scientists at Queen's Park in Toronto to recommend the Ontario government take steps to protect public health before the wireless rollout of 5G. We know it's coming. Switzerland just put a moratorium on it. It's the first country to put a moratorium on 5G, and other countries are following suit. Britain is one of them. Scientists from 42 countries are warning their governments now about emerging health problems associated with wireless radiation. Like Anna said, we're your constituents. There's 25 of us within at least 500 meters, and we're all going to be affected. We have heart disease, genetic predisposition to cancer in our family. I'm not willing to take that risk. We will move if this cell tower is built. And I know that they tried to sell the place recently, and an offer was withdrawn. Nobody wants a cell tower, not just because of the way it looks. There are health effects, and I urge you to really do your due diligence. And, you know, non-concurrence is what you voted before, twice, and I just urge you to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers this evening? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Bevan Bogalke. I live at 5016B Glenslake Road. We ask Council to reject this third application for the approval. This company's blatant disregard for the wishes of the community and their arrogance in putting forward another application really speaks to what this company is about. They don't seem to have the interests of the people in the community in mind. This is a pure money-profit thing. They have the easiest route possible with an already-approved neighbor, the only person, one man, who is able to basically dictate what will happen in our entire community. He's accepted that they want to move in there, and I don't know how much he gets paid per month, but it's significant. Cypress Land Services have explored alternative sites, they say. Well, are we to believe this? We've talked to all the people around. No one has been approached. Again, they seem to be banking on the site that they have, and that's it. And they're going to keep coming back and coming back and coming back. I don't know how Council can allow this to happen. It's unbelievable. The stress it's causing everywhere around our area. Our cellphone service is terrific. There was one blackout near Connie Road, which is over three kilometers away from us. And now we're expected to bear the brunt of all of this stuff. They mention as well that other carriers do not wish to add to the tower at this time. Now, I've dealt with contract negotiations and so on, and what that essentially means to me is that if it gets approved on their behalf, they can change their mind the very next day and start adding other dishes to it. So at this time is just a cop-out. With the coming of 5G, we find this assertion that they won't add to it just highly unlikely. What happened to Triangle Mountain in Langford was that one tower was approved. There are now six towers at that same site, because once one gets approved, they will not deconstruct that. They can add to it without even speaking to the community members and the neighbors that live around the site. There was a show on the news about the effects of the immediate area citizens. They have the highest rates of cancer and heart illnesses that are just spiking because of all these towers around them. It does affect people and animals and insects, et cetera, et cetera. There's no question about it. I thought I'd check out Freedom Mobile. I'm not talking about Shaw in this case. I know it's an offshoot of Shaw. But there's a company that rates other companies around the world. It's called TrustPilot. It's an international company. They did some reviews, or looked at the reviews, 425 reviews of Freedom Mobile. 95% of people felt that they had bad or terrible customer service, terrible tech support. Much of their tech support is contracted out to a company in Egypt. So our concerns really center around the health effects of radio frequency waves. There are just so many new reports coming out. It's unbelievable. And Canada is trailing far, far behind. These waves tend to affect older people and children more than others. Another concern is the disruption of the Glenslake Road area. We already have a change coming with the road. It's going to, the freeway, I like to call it, that'll be coming down and cutting off some of the area around Glenslake. That's going to affect the ecology and the environment as well. That ecosystem is very, very fragile. There is dedicated land that has been willed to the Sooki Nation by an individual, Mrs...
Packford.
Bernice Packford?
Bernice Packford.
So that that land would remain pristine, and it has. As Stephen was saying, people don't even log around it. The Glenslake area is precious and historic, and it's retained this now for ages, since the Glenslake brothers came at the turn of the century and logged it by hand so they could get a road up to the lake. That area has been really cared for. In fact, Camp Thunderbird, as you know, is at the end of the road, where kids go for camp throughout the year, mainly in the summer, but throughout the year. What are we advertising when we see these towers that are visible from the roads, from the highway, and the effects that they have on people? It's disgraceful. We feel that the area has been retained and respected, and it's a precious place for the area around Sook, and we want to see that continue. We don't care if the tower is made into a fake tree. We don't care if it looks like a unicorn. We don't want the tower. We've had your support two times now for this. I can't believe we're doing this a third time. I'll write it in my will that my children come back year after year after year if they want to keep presenting this, or I'll come back from the grave or something. This is unbelievable. We are the ones affected, basically. So that's, and others will be infected because of a lack of a concrete policy, really. Please reject this application for the third time. I don't care how many big guns they bring in from Vancouver or Calgary or Victoria or wherever. We're prepared to stand up to these people. They are a profit-motivated corporation. We want a healthy community, and we trust this Council to help with that, to provide a safe and healthy community. I remember growing up, we were told that asbestos was safe. Nothing wrong with that. It was government-approved. That sure changed around. We were told DDT was okay. You should use Roundup and DDT. That's now changed. These are mistakes that we've made, and when you're alerted to those mistakes with good supporting evidence, even though it may not jive with the current government regulations, I think it has to be respected. And the will of the people of that area should really help drive this. I think it's appalling as well that one person who agrees to allow them to come on his land and put up a tower can then influence, to a terrible degree, the lives of 25 other families living around that area. That's not fair. That's not right. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. I just wanted to read a short thing from The Wayfinder by Wade Davis about our disappearing environment, our disappearing cultures, our disappearing world. 11% of birds are threatened, 18% of mammals are now affected. We're stewards of these things. We have to do the greatest job we can do to help protect them. That area around Glenslake should be protected always. We don't want that tower. We don't want that tower.
Please, sir, direct your comments to me, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We don't want the tower.
Heard it.
Thank you very much.
Other speakers this evening?
Your Worship, Council, full of Sookites. My name is Alex Kirk from 5148 Sook Road. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this issue. In addition to the comments within my submission, I offer the following opinions. First, I'd like to say that, again, I'm not opposed to cell towers. However, their location must be carefully considered. So do we need a cell tower? Is there cell service in the area? Yes. Is there 911 service in the area? Yes. Will anybody be inconvenienced if this tower does not go in? Yes, if you happen to be a Freedom Mobile subscriber. So what is Freedom Mobile's motivation for placing a cell tower in this location? They want a piece of the cellular service provider pie. Okay, fair enough. They want to expand their cell coverage to attract more subscribers. Good, no problem. They want to increase profits. Okay, big corporations do. However, is Freedom Mobile concerned about nearby residents who oppose this tower? No. Is Freedom Mobile concerned about the community of Sook as a whole? I would say no, unless their development plans happen to fall in line with Freedom So what is the ideal location for a cell tower? More than likely on a rocky promontory with high elevation, unobstructed lines of sight to the desired coverage area, and straight, clear, straight shot for microwave back halls. Towers in cities and town sites are best located within industrial-zoned areas. All sites are preferably unobstructed, including trees and heavy foliage. Doesn't sound like the location they picked. These locations are generally set as far away from residences as possible. How do we know all this? Because that's the general description that fits 90% of cell towers up and down Vancouver Does FM's chosen location come close to meeting this description? Okay, what about Freedom Mobile's choice of location? The summary report indicates that Freedom Mobile investigated alternate locations. They want us to believe that their chosen location is the only viable solution. Are we to give any credibility to testimony from a company who has investigated options in their own best interest for a project they wish to proceed with? No. The most cost-effective, convenient, and easy fix will always be put forth as the only solution with little concern for homeowners in the vicinity. To think that Freedom Mobile would... To think that Freedom Mobile would, would propose anything else is naive. This is not the best location for a cell tower. And how do I know this? Well, you can look no further than Rogers and Telus. Both these companies have turned down FM's offer to piggyback equipment on this tower. Why? Because they must have better locations. From a geographical and technical point of view, is Freedom Mobile's choice of location the only one viable, the only viable one? No. Telecommunication, telecommunications are highly flexible and would be able to support any number of more suitable geographic locations in the area. In fact, I ventured to guess there are alternate locations that would impact no existing homes and give FM better overall cellular coverage and performance. Okay, if that's the case, why not use a more suitable location? I can only speculate that FM knows alternate locations will involve higher costs for access and power. The cheapest, most effective, and convenient solution is always the most attractive to companies unfettered by accountability. So in conclusion, this is not the right place for a cell tower. Longtime residents who oppose this installation should not have FM, Freedom Mobile's profit-driven plans for a badly-located but convenient, low-cost project in the heart of an established rural community forced upon them. I believe that Freedom Mobile has been disingenuous throughout the whole process. Mayor, councilors, thank you again for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you for your presentation. Any other members of the public tonight?
May I add something?
If you're adding something new.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Marilyn Erickson. This is a map, and I should have got a bigger one, of Freedom Mobile's website, where it shows the coverage in our area. We're here. All this orange, they say that they have covered already. Said that they're trying to expand their network, but they're offering good promotions right now, and they show this map, and it shows all this coverage, even where we are. There's just a couple of little gaps. I could pass it around. I also found this information on Better Business Bureau's site, which is an alert, and the pattern of complaints, a large volume and pattern of complaints for this business. This business is not accredited by Better Business Bureau. They have found that the coverage that they say they have, uh, there's customer complaints, and I just wanted to add that. It's, the map shows that there's coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, councilors, my name is Jeff MacArthur. I live at 9299 Invermere Road in Shirley, and, uh, my interest is, um, I respect, uh, those who have, reside in the vicinity. I don't. I'm up and down Highway 14, live just a short, uh, distance from Highway 14. Uh, have had to use the cellular network for numerous reasons over the years, almost six years since I've been here. Uh, most recently in a power outage, uh, to call 911 for an ambulance, and fortunately was able to get a cell tower, uh, in Port Angeles, uh, to relay the, um, the emergency. Uh, so, uh, remaining neutral to the site and whatnot, I know that there is, uh, a big public safety upside to, uh, expanding service in that area. And by my experience, the blackout goes just from, it seems to change, and it's from this side of Connie Road and into the chosen area. Uh, and as 911 calls come in, um, uh, quite often, uh, they're dropped in that area, and sometimes it's, it will be, uh, people, and I, I, as you know, I may be relying on my previous experience as an RCMP officer, but it's also of interest to me as a citizen in this area. There'll be people following a car, um, following a suspect, this kind of thing. They're always dropped in that area, uh, and then picked up. We may be operating, or the police, or the fire department, ambulance are operating that area, relying on 911 or on the cellular network to communicate, and they can't get through. So there is a blackout problem in that area. Uh, the other issue, uh, I would say, um, that remains, that would be fixed by having service in that area, is also, and I don't understand the, the technical parts of it exactly, is the triangulation of calls that come in. Uh, quite a few calls for service, uh, from roadside, from people like me who travel up and down all the time, uh, calling in for emergencies. Uh, those calls get dropped for one reason or another, and if there's only one, uh, provider, uh, they can't triangulate, uh, an exact location for it. So it wastes a lot of dollars trying to find, and time in, in response, trying to find out where that came from. So if there's overlap in any area, they can get it down, depending on how many towers are being hit, almost down to, to inches. And that's not the case there. If there's service at all, there's no ability to do that. So like I said, my interest is in expanding, uh, uh, the, um, service that we get cellular-wise up and down Highway 14. There's been a lot of issues that, uh, uh, ended up in slower service, uh, worse result for people trying to get emergency services as a result of, uh, not having continuous service up and down, and the expanded use and pressure on this area that we're getting, as you people know, uh, more than anybody. Uh, and I just wanted to illuminate you without, uh, really getting into the, uh, the side of things that I'm not qualified to talk about, uh, on the upside that does come with providing service in that area. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. MacArthur. You may be curious to note that there is cellular coverage working its way out to Port Renfrew. Um, the CRD has just passed the necessary, uh, bylaws for that. You will have read in the Suk News Mirror that Mike Hicks is advocating for the coverage because there is none out that way. And rural B.C., actually rural Canada, has been advocating to the point where it's a, it's a, it's a federal, there's a lot of federal pressure for funding to actually bring cellular coverage to areas that currently don't have it. So there may be a cell tower coming your way in the not-too-distant future.
Thanks, your worship.
Okay. Just one of the just, thank you. Anything new to add?
Yes.
Okay.
If you go past Connie Road...
You'll need your name again, though.
Oh, it's Stephen Saunders.
Yes, we know who you are, but just for the listeners, like, because there is webcasting, and it just helps with the chronology when we're looking back.
Okay. If you go past Connie Road and look at the telephone pole right at the end of Connie Road, you'll see they've, uh, recently installed a pole-mounted transmitter for the cell phones.
Okay, thank you.
And there is no gap in service.
Anything else from anyone? Just wanted to shut that off. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for your comments, as well as the submissions that you've provided. Um, I can appreciate, I'm certain we all can, when something is coming into your backyard or into your neighborhood, of course, it's going to raise concerns. And we hear that, whether it's a rezoning application, whether it's any of the other towers that we have, and, uh, council certainly takes that into consideration. Um, in the past, Freedom has come in and has received, uh, support for concurrence from council for different locations, places like the Legion, for example, uh, among others. Telus and Rogers in recent years has also upgraded their technology that they provide, and, uh, we've received similar concerns from the community. Um, but I will share that we probably have close to fifty cellular towers within our community already. Telus has about forty-five because of the way they use their service. Rogers has two, and there's another provider, maybe it's Bell, that has two as well. Uh, many residents have also put cellular boosters onto their own homes to improve the signal or the connectivity to them, and we have several on the roof of this building. Uh, we appreciate and hear the health concerns. It's really Health Canada, though, that makes those determinations. We're not scientists here at the table, so there's a certain amount that we do need to pass off to other governments and expect them to do their jobs. Uh, but as I said, in terms of rural B.C. or in rural Canada in general, there's been a need for connectivity. This is a service that people rely on, that they expect to have, uh, that they ask when they're moving in. What, you'll ask where the nearest fire hydrant is, where the nearest schools are, what services coming into your community. This is now one that people ask. There's been some debate that having connectivity closer enhances property values, but I'm not going to get into that because I don't have anything in front of me that would prove either way. So at some point, maybe they devalued, maybe they valued, maybe it's neutral, I don't know. Uh, and I suppose it just varies there. I'll also share that there's a company called Telisat, um, private company. The government of Canada has engaged with them, and they are now, there's a satellite orbiting the planet at the moment. It's a LEO satellite that's testing another way to improve or to provide cellular service into remote areas. It's unlikely that we will have such technology here, because we're, while we're rural, we're still urban. This is more in places like northern B.C. where running fiber optic or hydro is even an issue. Um, that's all being tested, but, um, it's projected in the coming years, there could be over two hundred satellites orbiting this planet. Again, it's the government of Canada, the federal government, that looks into that. In terms of youth, um, it was interesting, on the way home, I heard an interview with SD sixty-two, our school district's superintendent, where they are doing a cellphone ban, a test project in Dunsmere School, uh, because it's a middle school, it's distracting the class. And so students are to leave their cellular phones in their lockers, and now three hundred and some students are petitioning against this particular, uh, policy in that school because obviously this is how young people pass notes. We used to pass notes, they don't pass notes, they're probably texting each other or using some other app I've never heard of before. Uh, but it's an expectation. I use Telus and Rogers. Both drop for me. I'm on Bluetooth, I'm driving legally, and they will drop in that particular section and, as well as a few others. Not every day, but most times. Uh, Telus, despite all the additions they have added, um, works in most areas of my house, but not all, and Rogers is the same, in some areas, but not all of my house. And Suk, as we've heard before, it's a difficult, it's a difficult terrain to cover because of the valleys, the hills, the proximity to the water. I could be at the Suk Baptist Church, and I'm already welcome to the U.S. and start roaming, um, potentially. So that's an ongoing issue. It's just the nature of where we live. Uh, we don't hear from the residents that, um, expect and want better service, but they do provide those, that data to the service providers, which is why Telus, Rogers, and Freedom have come back, because their residents, who are also our constituents, are continually wanting more service. Uh, I appreciate the rural concern of your area, but at the same time, we have fiber optic potentially running all the way to Port Renfrew because there's no coverage out there. And now it's just, we're in a digital age. So there's an expectation of people desiring to be connected and wanting access to those services. So I'll just leave it at that. But, um, right now, the federal government is putting forward a platform to fund expansion into communities because service providers are unwilling to bring it themselves. I think there was one island just off our coast, on Vancouver Island, where I think it was Telus was going to withdraw the service from that community entirely, and they were mandated to remain and to improve the technology, but those residents would have, wouldn't have had anything there, and it's life, life and death for them. So anyway, um, I'll turn it to other members of council for any thoughts, questions of either of the applicant, now that you've received some feedback from members of the public in addition to the letters. Counselor St. Pierre?
I have a number of questions.
And who are you directing the questions to? They would be to either our staff, or if you want clarity from the applicant, or are you looking...
I believe most of them will be clarity from the applicant.
Okay, can I ask, um, maybe just ask all your questions, and then, given that there, it seems there's different fields of expertise there, then they can determine...
Perfect.
...who should answer them?
So the first is that I found a bit of a discrepancy in eighty meters and a hundred ninety meters. So I heard that, um, the tower was a hundred, the closest resident was a hundred ninety meters, and then I was hearing eighty meters. So which one is it actually? Is it eighty or a hundred ninety? What's, what's the actual number? Uh, there were many, many locations, but...
Okay, so your question is to me, and then it goes to the applicant, it's not to the public?
Three, your worship. I was curious as to whether or not Freedom was going to be able to offer wireless services in Suk without the tower. So that's a bit of a yes or no. I was curious as to what process was actually used to consider the alternative sites, given that, um, we have people that have checked and didn't seem to find anyone that had been specifically contacted. So was it a more of a, a technical search in terms of, you know, just curious how that search was actually conducted? And I've heard about this pole-mounted tech a few times now. Uh, I do expect that if Telus or Rogers thought they could use pole-mounted tech to actually overcome the dead zones, they would have already done that. So I don't expect that to be a solution, but I'm curious as to why it's not a solution. So we have a dead zone, uh, it's accepted as being a risk to our community. I'd like to know why this pole-mounted tech is not appropriate. Uh, so I guess that's it.
Okay, so there's some questions there. We're just looking for clarity, proximity to the closest homes, uh, the search for alternative locations, and what that process looked like, and questions on pole-mounted technology. This is to the applicant. The, the conversation is now with council. And if you could turn on the microphone again, please, just on the base of the stem aerial.
Okay, I'm, uh, James Shaw from Cyprusland. So what was your, the first question is about the...
Uh, proximity.
The proximity. Um, we, we, you know, we believe it was a hundred ninety meters. Um, if, you know, I'm not going to argue with the, the, you know, the people here, if there is, someone does believe it, it's, uh, you know, we may have missed a home or, you know, the, it's a very heavily treed area, so we may have missed a home in the trees that wasn't, you know, wasn't super visible on, uh, on the aerial photo.
There's another residence.
It's very...
Okay, the question is between...
So I'm not, I'm not going to agree or disagree. I can't, and I can't answer that question for you now.
So it's ninety meters, then, would be the, the closest proximity, is that correct?
Eighty meters. Well, I, we, we, we thought it was a hundred and ninety meters.
A hundred ninety.
Now, maybe we've missed the, the home on the, on the aerial, um, but, again, I don't have that information in front of me that I can, that I can answer that right now.
Okay. So the next question was, uh, will Freedom be able to provide wireless service in Suk without the tower? And, uh, provide basically the competition that would actually allow residents to have some of those savings that obviously they would like to have, given that a couple million dollars is a lot of money in our residents' pockets.
Um, is this maybe something you can answer that? I cannot, sorry.
Good evening, it's Colin Lavery. Uh, yes, we currently do provide service, uh, to the, to the community of Suk. Uh, this is just an area where it is, is not, it is deficient service.
Thank you very much. And what process was actually used to consider alternative sites?
So, so, you know, in your question, when you asked it before, you had, we, we looked at, obviously, two things, you know, we looked at technically, you know, the properties that would work, um, from, you know, a geographic and topographical, um, you know, remit. We have, you know, we, the big, the big, obviously, the big goal of this tower, a big target of this tower is to provide that coverage along, along the highway. So, you know, that did rule out a number of properties, but there were about five or six, uh, properties that we, that we approached. I think one of them, I think Colin mentioned in his, uh, presentation, the YMCA, and then there were a number of properties that were to the west, to the west of that property, not necessarily along, um, Suk Road. Um, you know, we got into fairly lengthy negotiations with a number of, a number of properties, and, you know, the, the, you know, the, the negotiations were fairly, to begin with, were, were kind of moving, you know, it was, you know, they, they, we met with them, and, um, you know, we, you know, it went on for several weeks, and then I think there was, there's definitely, you know, there's a lot of pressure from the community, and I think people were kind of, said, "We don't really," you know, "We've kind of been thinking about this, we don't really want to be part of this." Um, you know, it's too much, uh, too much of a hot, hot topic at the moment with the community.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, I'm just curious about the pole-mounted tech and why is that not viable option for getting to that corridor?
The pole-mounted technology is, is a small, it's called a small cell, which Telus has, yeah, Telus has put in probably, I think, I think for this 50, for this 40-odd Telus sites, they've probably put 40-odd small cells throughout the community. They're, you know, they're, they're not the ideal solution for, for this kind of, for this kind of area. You know, they, really a small cell only provides coverage of about 50 to 100 meters, something like that. And then, which is, which is, which is great in a, you know, which is great in an urban area where you have a lot of users on your cellphone within that area, but in a, in a rural setting, it's not the ideal solution. And I know, you know, for Telus, there are, there are, it's something that they, they can deploy quite easily on their own infrastructure, but it's not the solution to provide good continuous service along, along the highway. Because if you think about it this way, if you're driving along in your car at 60 kilometers an hour, that you very quickly pass through that coverage area, which is probably only, say, 200 meters. So you very quickly pass through that, and it's very difficult for the handoff onto the next, to the next cell. So a macro cell site, which is what we're proposing here, really provides that, you know, that blanket coverage to the, to the whole community. And small cells are really not the, the ideal, the ideal option here for sure. Like, and, you know, the thick, the thick trees, the foliage, that very quickly eats up the, the signal. And, you know, you'll find, even if there were small cells along, along Sook Road, those, you know, those properties that are bound, that are on Sook Road, really probably wouldn't see a lot of benefit from those small cells inside the, inside the home.
So through your worship, just to confirm, the reason that the pole-mounted technology doesn't seem to be as useful is because if you've got vehicles going at speed, the handoff would still cause issues? You still would have
It can do, yeah, it can do.
It can?
It can. I'm not saying it would, like, if you have, I'm not saying, you know, if you have, you know, a good network of them, it would, you know, but it's not the ideal solution, though there can be issues handing off calls when it goes from one, one cell site to the next cell site.
Through your worship, is it cost-effective compared to a tower?
It depends on the setting. You know, in a, in an urban area, I would say for sure, but, but really, the, the small cell isn't, isn't, isn't the solution to cell coverage, it's really to augment the cell coverage. So if you really need, you know, you always need the, the macro cell site to provide that blanket coverage. And the, the small cell is really good to kind of augment it, maybe, maybe fill in a small hole, or fill in an area where, you know, you, there's a lot of customers and there's high capacity in the network, but it's not the, it's not, you know, you really need a, a good mixture of both a macro and a small cell if, you know, there are, you know, deficiencies in that, the service from the macro site.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
No, we're, we're with council now. We've concluded the public and now it's council that's deliberating and getting clarity. Because he had questions that were specific for the applicant to be answered.
I have an answer to the question that he asked.
We have a procedural bylaw that this council has adopted, so I'm sorry, but that's where the public is.
I think he's completely wrong, because he doesn't seem to have a technological understanding. He doesn't even
I'm sorry, but we're, the discussion is with council at this time. So other members of council have comments that they would like to make? Questions? Counselor Bettes? Observations?
Counselor McMath keeps telling me to turn it off, so here we go. Anyways, I originally thought there was, there was nothing new than last year, and there's not a whole lot new. And what I do understand new is I'm interested in this 500 meter separation that Langley has. Langley's a very progressive community, so I think that has some merit. The other thing is, in my previous life, now it's been 22 years since I've been retired, I was a radiation safety officer for the Department of National Defense at the Navy, and my job was to ensure the safety under larger transmitters than what you're dealing with. It's dated, mind you, and I guess my, my training and my intellect tells me that there's not a great deal of danger with this cellphone tower, but I wouldn't bet my life on it. So I, I do have some concerns, and that's from somebody that's worked in the industry. The other thing is, last year, I haven't this year, last year I was, I went up to see the Saunders and stood on their deck. And, and I was thinking just recently that if I was there and that property was for sale, having that cellphone tower at that distance would be a deal breaker for me. And that's a man on the street, I would not buy that property for that reason. I don't know what value that is, other than I'm sure sounding that the deal fell through that they've already had. I can only conclude with myself that the property values would be effective, affected, and I think they'd be quite considerable. I wouldn't even take a reduction, to tell you the truth. So with that, I'm sure when we get a motion that I'm in favor of non-concurrents, we've dealt with this last year, and I don't see a great deal of change. Thank you.
Counselor McMath, then Bateman?
If you go online and take a look at cell towers and you look at a cell tower map in Langley, like, I'd be curious to know when Langley put that into effect because they have an incredibly dense population of cellphone towers now.
I can answer that for you, Counselor McMath. So the policy that Langford has is that they are, they
Langley or Langford?
Langley city. Langford doesn't have a cellphone policy, I believe, I didn't find one, but Langley Township has a policy where they are required to poll 500, all the residents living within 500 meters. So it's not about banning a cellphone tower to be in a 500 meter, but they must poll residents within the 500 meters near a proposed project.
And when did that come forward?
In 2015. This is just a, this is just something, new Langley Township policy. Telus wanted to fill in some gaps, they have a policy to poll residents within 500 meters, the ballots go out, and, and then council takes that into consideration.
I'm just curious if that was initiated after, like, concrete and solid and consistent cellphone reception was in state. So you've touched on a few points that I agree with, which is that it's Health Canada that should be setting the limitations and the restrictions. And so there's a lot of reports that have come forward about the health factors, so perhaps, like, from a municipality perspective, we can look at going forwards to Health Canada with, you know, petitions and studies that have been received. I don't think it's this municipality's function to, to invade that water on a case-by-case basis. And if you look at the cellphone map in the core of Sook, there's about 55 towers located within there, and that's a high-density area. So while I appreciate the passion, and I would be here as well if I lived there, because that's why a lot of people move to Sook, the infrastructure has to go somewhere. And nobody wants it in their backyard, but it does have to go somewhere. And there are 14,000 other people who aren't here, who I imagine wouldn't feel the same way and wouldn't feel as impassioned about it. So for me, at this point, like, I'm, I'm in agreeance with a positive letter. When we talk about how it's a similar offer that has come back from previously, that could just very well be a case of other options that have been looked at, and it's still the same location. Aesthetics, those have been addressed. Health, this is a federal issue. Property value is debatable, and it would be a bit, it would be ironic to clear a ginormous matte black pole in the heart of the community, but turn down an aesthetically pleasing monopiner tower, whatever it's called, in a less dense area.
Isn't the new Rogers Tower red? No, is it black? Oh, that one, yes. Okay. Thinking of someone, I saw someone else. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bateman? I just Googled township of Langley because I wanted to see their policy, but I can't find it on their website. It was a news article that I referenced.
I just speak to that.
Counselor Bateman, thank you.
Okay, so this is, this is more commentary and observation. First of all, I don't doubt in the least the authenticity and the sincerity of the applicant. This is a motivated fourth cellphone provider coming into the market, disrupting, creating new price points. You know, the high cost of cellphone plans in Canada is a gripe many people have. So I can see, I can see the value for competitiveness within the marketplace and the value to consumers. There are, however, three other cellphone providers, or service providers. This application, unlike the previous one, really has emphasized the public safety piece and has had the support of the Sook Fire Rescue side of things. As they say, having coverage for radio transmission with dead spots is important, and for expanding the strength of the paging network, which I assume is the, the crest service, I believe. So these, these are the upsides to this proposal. The downsides, I think, looking at the range of them, which the, the residents have stated, the local community clearly doesn't want this tower. Everyone has oodles of cellphone coverage from other providers, the aesthetics issue, the low-level hum has been cited, health concerns with humans and wildlife, there's the question of the precautionary principle. There's a group called Canadians for Safe Technology, run by the former president of Microsoft Canada, and he speaks, he questions Code Six. It is akin to standards in the European Union, Japan, the U.S. However, there's questions, the precautionary principle perhaps needs to be played out. But my primary two points around this would be that this area in question is zoned community residential, preserve rural land and agricultural character of the lands outside the CGA. So we're not in the CGA. We have that big monstrous tower in, on Wadham's Way, which is both an aesthetic eyesore, or you could see it as proof that Sook is wired for the future and we're ready for business and for new residential population in our town center, in the community growth area. This is outside that area. And again, back to my point that I raised earlier, and my, the reason for my non-concurrents vote last year was property values. And we did hear a very direct evidence of this earlier tonight. To quote again, the right passage from the Forbes Brothers Report of 2017, quote, "Public concerns or fears, particularly of health effects such as cancer, can have a negative effect on property values, even when those fears are found to be unwarranted." So that's the key point there. Whether the, yeah. So, yeah, I'll be voting for non-concurrents on this tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Lajanos?
I like the idea of having competition in the marketplace, and I do appreciate the concerns of the residents, but I believe that economic development is one of the biggest challenges that's been facing Sook for many years, and this is the type of infrastructure that we need to attract the type of businesses that we want in Sook. And so I will, I would support Shaw.
Okay, so anything further to add, or someone like to make a motion? Counselor St. Pierre?
I'd like to add just a thought on property values that keep on coming up. I believe our role in council is not actually to necessarily protect the property values of individual homeowners in one particular area, but through our decisions to promote public safety, a healthy community, a place that's good to be, and we have to consider the entire community at that point in time. I feel incredibly conflicted on this, simply because I do feel that the science is not necessarily clear. I believe that the actual evidence shows that the tower's risks are overrated and that the actual cellphone in our pockets are underrated. There's a lot more risk from the cellphone that you hold to your head than there is from the towers further away. That's what the science indicates. People are saying now that you should hold your cellphone away like half an inch or an inch or two, and that will actually reduce your, the risks by up to 90%. I don't know, because I don't feel like the science is necessarily being very clear about this stuff. Certainly, I don't think that Canada is necessarily leading the way in terms of actually being precautionary or being careful about these things, and that's where my own concerns begin. I do think that we need to protect everyone in the community and provide safety for everyone in the community. That includes making sure that we have 911 coverage, and that includes making sure that people that are further away and have a cellphone in their pocket that's working twice or three times as hard to reach a tower aren't actually being put at risk. If I want to consider safety as the primary concern, then this is a very difficult decision to make. And I feel badly for the residents who have galvanized several times and are putting up with a lot of stress on this. Having said that, I do think that we need the development, and I think that I would probably fall on the side of supporting this.
Okay, so Counselor Bettes is going to make a motion?
Yeah.
Can you turn on your microphone?
Counselor McMath, you should have picked me up on that. That the Committee of the Whole recommend that council issue a letter of non-concurrents to Freedom Mobile and, where is it? You moved it. Innovation, Science, and Economic Development Canada for proposed telecommunications tower at 5154 Sook Road. That's my motion.
Okay, so there's no second or, second or required, as we're in Committee of the Whole? So in this case, this motion, should you vote in favor of it, would be to turn down this application, non-concurrents, okay? All right, so I'll call the question then. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? So the motion is defeated with Counselors Lajanas, McMath, St. Pierre, and myself in opposition. So given that that has failed, would someone else like to make a motion then? Counselor McMath?
That Committee of the Whole recommend that council issue a letter of concurrence to Freedom Mobile and Innovation, Science, and Economic Development Canada for the proposed telecommunications tower at 5154 Sook Road.
Okay. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Opposed? And Counselor Bateman and Counselor Bettes are opposed, so the motion's carried. And then in this case, this recommendation would go forward to council, but then ultimately it's up to the innovation and science to make the final determination. We just provide feedback and they weigh it in with everything else, including public input.
This is not your fault, these are going to be at risk, not your 35 years of work. I can't give my property away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your support. The entire 100% of community spoke to you, 100% of affected people. And we have great social
You voted for everybody else's community. You shouldn't be ashamed of yourself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item next is the building bylaw, item two. So over to staff, please.
So we have our chief building inspector here tonight, who is going to walk you through our new building bylaw. I just wanted to note that the bylaw that is in front of you is not in its final, final form. There are a few tweaks that we will be making and consulting legal advice on. So this is, it won't change the content of the bylaw, we're just going to be tweaking words and have a few questions. So this is the bylaw that's here for council tonight, just to learn about it and give us any feedback that you might have before we take it for final legal review. And will also be presented to the development community in early March. And with that, I'll turn it over to our chief building inspector.
Good evening. Stan Duick, and I'm just going to basically step you through the building bylaw. It's on. There we go. So the main So the main reasons for the new bylaw is obviously there's been changes to the B.C. Building Act. There's also been major changes to the building code as recently as December of last year. Some clarifications of what the Architects Act requires up and above what the building code talks about. There's been internal requirements and changes. The existing building bylaw is very outdated and not in compliance with the provincial legislation, like we mentioned up above. How did we get here? We utilized the MIA model bylaw. We've had legal review of the preliminary draft, which was mentioned. It's been court-ailed to the District of Sook and staff have spent many hours reviewing and commenting. So what are the significant changes? Consistency. The B.C. government limits local government authority to set building requirements. So if a local government have any existing building requirements, those requirements will no longer have no legal force after the two-year transition period, which ended in 2017. And to avoid confusion for the construction sector, the province encourages local governments to amend their bylaws to eliminate such requirements. It also requires competency of your building officials. The new provincial qualification requirements include exams, continued professional development. In fact, this afternoon, we attended a session on the Step Codes and being listed in the registry of qualified building officials. So if you're a Level One Inspector, you can only inspect houses. Level Two, small commercial. And Level Three, you can do everything. The B.C. Building Act also provides some evaluation of innovative building proposals. Province will establish a review process to accept and evaluate innovative building proposals received from individuals. This is still in the works. As part of the support for innovation, the Building Code Appeal Board will hear more complex appeals. Major changes to the B.C. Building Code. Revisions took effect, as I mentioned earlier, in December of 2019. That need to be included in the district's bylaw to ensure compliance. Some of the major changes are the definitions for single or secondary suites has definitely changed. Changes to accessibility, there's been some changes. And tall wood jurisdiction regulations, that's the mass timber, which now you can build 12 stories high. And you're building out of wood. Mind you, it's mass timber, but that was never in the codes in the past. Energy efficiency standards have been updated. And of course, the big thing is the B.C. Energy Step Code. So what it sort of looks like is the B.C. Energy Step Code will require all new buildings to meet net-zero energy-ready by 2032. And that, all provinces and territories have signed on to that federal guideline that in 2032 will be at net-zero-ready. So what we're proposing in the bylaw is in 2020, once this bylaw is adopted, will be at Step Three for wood-framed residential buildings, six stories or less in height, and Step Two for all other buildings. In our meeting that we had this afternoon, we've been told that pretty well everything that's being built today without any changes will fairly easily, with a few tweaks, meet Step Three. And the province will make this mandatory in 2022 regardless. And we're suggesting in the bylaw that in 2025, we'll be at Step Four for wood frame and six stories and Step Three for all other buildings. And just a bit of history there, for Part Nine buildings, there's five steps, whereas for Part Three buildings, the bigger industrial, commercial, residential buildings that are Part Three buildings, it's only Step Four. So again, we're proposing in 2027 and onward instead of 2032, that will be at Step Five and Step Four. The Architects Act. This legislation governs the architectural professions throughout the province and previously wasn't included in the district's bylaw. This is being included now because of the following. It's a requirement of the province. Certain projects require an architect to be involved and this closes a gap on the district's liability because it was being missed on a few projects. So it's now proposed to be included. Next steps. As was mentioned already, there'll be a full legal review of the bylaw. There is still internal review of affected bylaws and identify if there are any other amendments, like we might want to make some amendments to the zoning bylaw as an example. Fees and charges by law amendments, they've already been identified for changes. Forms and applications will need some updating and we will do some information to the public and developers. And the timeline, proposed timeline is that we'll develop some information sessions in early March. Final legal review will be done mid to late March. Bylaw consideration, again, late March, as well as education materials for developers. And final adoption could be early April or early May. Thank you.
Okay.
Hopefully it didn't go too quick.
No, I...
There's lots of material.
I appreciate just the approach because when you receive something, just the way that you presented the material, because if you were just to drop a copy of the building bylaw, it's like, okay. And, you know, it's just important. I appreciate how you just sort of laid out the changes and what we needed to sort of bring in to modernize and so forth. So Counselor Matt and Counselor Betos?
Can you go back on your slides? I'll say when. And your timeline right there, perfect.
There.
Yeah, there. So you, just for clarification through Your Worship to Staff, you're looking to push up the Steps program into 2027 instead of 2032?
That we're at 2027. In 2027...
Sorry, Mr. Duick, can you turn on your microphone? Sorry.
Yep. Yeah, that in 2027, we're proposing. You guys got to decide.
Yeah, we know.
Mayor and council has to decide. But in 2027, that we'd be at Step Five and Step Four.
What's the deadline to be at Step Five?
2032.
Okay, so your proposal, is that it come earlier?
Yes.
Okay. And then can you go forward a couple of slides? Keep going, keep going, keep going. Yeah, right there. So I thought we had made a motion at a previous meeting that we would get a report on the Steps program and then that we would also reach out to developers, builders and transport providers and then have a discussion about the advantages and the disadvantages to the Steps program, period, and definitely to bumping up the implementation of the Steps program. And so the bullet point information to the public and developers, like I don't think that's the next step. I think it's more of everybody coming together to have a discussion about this because there are, while I appreciate the environmental advantages of it, there's also financial disadvantages to it. So in a marketplace where it's incredibly almost impossible for new home buyers to even get into the market, this is one more hurdle for them to get over. So I think it requires a lot more discussion from other parties rather than an information session for them after. Yeah, and so through Your Worship to Staff, where does that request lie?
Through Your Worship, if memory serves, that motion didn't pass to have that Step Code report come forward because that was going to be discussed at this presentation. And I think what might be misconstrued there is that after this meeting, there will be a... I won't call it an information. There will be a consultation session with the local developers in early March.
Okay.
And then we will get our full legal review on the bylaw with their input and council's input from this evening.
Okay, great.
And then it would be coming forward for first and second and third and all the readings. And then the information is after the bylaw's been adopted. But of course, there is opportunity for input when the bylaw has its readings as well as the developer input session that we will have in early March.
Yeah, because the way that it reads it, and especially when it's in that order, it seems like it's like a notice after. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, Counselor Betos, then St. Pierre?
Yeah, can we go back to the, through Your Worship, can we go back to the slide with the Step Codes again? Those different... There, that's the one. So you're saying today, we are basically at Step Three in what we're doing right now.
Sorry?
Okay, and for Step Four and Step Five, I keep seeing these steps and I know nothing about what they mean. Can you give me a couple of examples of where Step Four is? You know, are we going to two feet of insulation in the walls? What does Step Four mean? And you're the professional on it, so if you could tell me, a layperson, in a few words, what the difference... What are we going to in Step Four that is going to impact the builders and the new homes?
Well, Step Three is basically your construction today. Two-by-six walls, two-foot centers, R22 bats, et cetera. Step Four, you're introducing higher efficient mechanical systems. You may be adding an HRV that's providing you your air, at a tempered inside air temperatures. You may be going from double pane to triple pane. And Step Five, we're not sure of what that really looks like yet.
Okay. Yeah, this is one of those big mysteries in life, so thank you though.
Counselor St. Pierre?
I'm just curious about the consistency. My understanding is that the provincial building code now includes things like composting toilets. Are we coming into alignment with that or how does that work? In terms of... And I've got a number of questions, maybe just that one through Your Worship to Staff.
Composting toilets? No.
Nope, okay. Well, that's good to know. The Architects Act. What exactly is that going to do in terms of... I know that in some cases, we have to hire expensive professionals to do work that could potentially be done by a good chart with things like spans and so on and so forth. Is the Architects Act going to be pushing us in the direction of additional costs for additional professional fees or... And do we have a choice?
The Architects Act requires that for certain-sized buildings, the building code may not... It still may be a Part Nine building, which as a rule, doesn't need an architect. But for certain sizes of assembly buildings, for example, of... And I'm just going to go off the top of my head here, 460 square meters in size, or 470, I think it is, in size requires an architect. Whereas, if you just looked at the building code, it's 600 square meters. That bumps you into Part Three, which requires an architect. So there are a bit of overlaps with the Architects Act that we've just recently realized.
Thank you. I'm also curious about the Step Code. I definitely think it's taking us in the right direction in terms of letting industry decide on, you know, designs and how they're actually going to reach the expectations. What I am curious about, though, is the measurements. I understand that what they're doing is they're using their energy... I forget the name of them, but...
Energy advisor.
Okay, their energy advisors to basically do a test, you know, do a blow test, make sure that there's not too much infiltration happening in the building and so on and so forth. But it doesn't seem to necessarily measure the actual energy cost of the home itself. So for example, you could have a much smaller home that would actually cost less to operate, energetically speaking, and you have a much larger home. Do they take that into account at all? Are they actually looking at, for example, the energy invested in materials? Are they looking at the actual ongoing energy needs of the building? Or is it just strictly how much insulation and how much heat are you losing?
It does include the mechanical devices and the actual consumption. And in December 2019, there was changes to reflect that a small building or a small house is... It's reflected in the Step Program now, which was missing in the past. So they do get a bonus for being small.
Counselor Betos? Or no? You're covered, okay? Counselor Bateman?
All right, thank you, Mr. Duick.
Duick.
Duick. Guaranteed, I'll get our names wrong. So thank you for this building bylaw is you followed the recommended Municipal Insurance Association bylaw. You've taken into account the recommendations of the Development and Land Use Committee, I believe. Did you fully... I note on the July 18th, 2018 minutes that they put out inclusion of oil tanks in certain sections. They had questions around whether permit fees should be reviewed further for options for reductions on properties requiring less inspection. So I didn't see any nuances in your professional consultant fees. So I'm curious, did in fact the members of that committee have an opportunity to work with you or to review your model bylaw that you've adopted, adapted, I should say?
Because that committee was dissolved when the election occurred and then Mr. Duick has been with us...
BMT.
Just coming up a year?
BMT, before my time.
Yeah, so one was... They weren't here at the same time.
Well, that's fine. So at this open consultation, our builders will have an opportunity to weigh in. So I guess the one, the political football here is the Step Code. And it seems like quite a blunt approach has been applied here. I did note there was this study done by the B.C. Housing. Did you have an opportunity to look at that? This shows how... This is B.C. Energy Step Code Local Government Survey. It looked into the current status of Step Code implementation as of last summer. And there are so many ways to skin this particular cat. You know, you can move forward straight into regulatory requirement. Other communities are creating incentive programs. Some are going at ground-level education. The model that I like is Central Sanage whereby their council in open meeting had presentations from the Greater Victoria Home Builders Association, Canadian Home Builders Association Vancouver Island. They had a B.C. Energy Step Code representative come and talk to them and also City Green, which is a specialist in environmental heat pumps and that whole package. So that was an opportunity for Central Sanage to determine what its strategy would be going ahead, its council. And I think that's what Counselor Matt was referring to, was our hope that we had a Committee of the Whole session, which was open and information gathering regarding the Step Code in particular. The rest of the building code, bravo, but this particular area. In Central Sanage, they opted for Step One in 2020, Step Three starting next year. They also offered rebates on building permit fees. So if a builder got to Step Three, that was a 25% discount on building permit fees, and they would offer 100% building permit fee reduction for Step Five projects. So that's one example of many that we as a council might want to consider. Could you explain your thinking about inserting this? Could you explain your thinking about inserting this particular format? Did you, did you look at some of these other options?
Well, it's totally up to council, mayor and council to decide whether they want to provide incentive programs or, and a lot of municipalities do, but that's a call that needs to be made.
So I'll just add that, you know, if we add in incentive programs, then we're decreasing revenues, which means that we'll need to increase property taxes more or forego necessary infrastructure related projects that are needed for our community. So there's, there's nothing, there's no, like a rebate is great, but it's only going to cost the homeowner more down the road. Yes, they'll all pay everything when they purchase their home. So it's, it's great to give that incentive, but then it'll just be something someone else will have to pay for down the road. So I just sort of now view anything that is either, you know, whether it's a grant or whatever, it's just, it's an expense that we all have to find money for. We've been, you know, as we go into our next round of budget conversations, we've spent a lot of time now determining what to cut out because what was presented was too much. And so that's where, you know, just giving somebody, we're at step three right now. Also giving an incentive for something that they're already doing doesn't, I mean, maybe the, I suppose the building community would be happy for it, but they would be, we would just, the homeowner would end up paying for all of that, and then we would just need to make up lost revenue. In some ways, what I'm sort of looking for from the province, I didn't really hear it today in the budget, is they are bringing this in and it's a good move. And now we're expected to follow suit and find, it's kind of a download. They're bringing this in, they're making this happen, and now we need to find the revenue to offset what they want to do as a province. So it's fine when any level of government brings in regulatory changes. I'd like to see some revenue come with that for us to adopt this because otherwise it'll just cost us all more. And that's the reality for it. So when I start to hear, well, we'll incentivize this or reduce that or waive that, okay, it's just more expenses. Central Sanage is fortunate, large industrial base, large commercial tax base, Bouchard Gardens, large commercial tax base of which we don't have. So comparatively, we're just not in a position where we can afford. So I just, when we're looking, and I don't want to pick on you councillor Bateman, but when we're looking for other communities, we have to also consider the size of them and how, where's their revenue coming from and how are they getting it? So a more, I'd rather look for a community that's growing, we're growing. I don't know what Central Sanage's growth rate is, but only from what I heard, it's Langford and Souk that are basically growing. The rest are not. And, and let's look at where the revenue seems to come from. The one piece that jumped out a bit for me, no, because I still have the floor. Just in terms of the secondary suites, and I think you addressed this, that where secondary suites can be added. Right now, like for example, a secondary suite in a duplex, we would need to amend the zoning bylaw. So this is where we seem to have this gray area, gray area in our community now where builders are, some are saying, well, this is all legal, so I'm going to build it. Because they are, and we know that that's happening, but it's still contrary to our zoning bylaw. So it's just now in my head, every time we may entertain a zoning application, it's assuming that people are going to build more density in there. And then we need to consider what we're asking for because now we have all these parking and congestion issues around town. So it's just, we may choose to amend our zoning bylaw down the road, but then how do we go back and fix problems in areas where people took the liberty of building something? And I have a hard time just saying, okay, well, I'm going to approve that now because it's legal. Well, you didn't build it legally to begin with. So that's just something that I think it's important that that remain in there like that for now. And then in terms of, I guess my answer as to why the step code breakdown is the way it is was because a year ago, council declared a climate emergency and wanted to see things happen. So I'm hearing that staff have probably responded in that way to come up and to incrementally put something in place. So it is a policy decision that we would need to make. And as we go through this, then we can make that determination and we may need to revisit that particular motion if we're just going to be altering everything. Councillor St. Pierre.
Can I just jump in at this point?
Uh, okay.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm seeking an opportunity to have a wide ranging discussion. I'm not stuck on any particular idea here. But I think we need a few developers in the room apart from our one distinguished representative back there. And that we need a public process before we make a policy decision on this.
Of course, absolutely, of course. That's why there's a timeline. This is just, we've been asking, where's the building bylaw for quite some time, and staff have outlined this. There's a full building consult. Can we go to the slide where it just shows the steps? Like I think for now, the recommendation is that we are receiving this for information, not to do anything more with, but also that they're looking forward, that they will be enacting this particular timeline that may change depending on what comes out of any of these particular sessions as they go on. I see that as a moving timeline. If we have two people show up at our developer information session, then I think we need to do more engagement so that we get more interaction there and then start to consider how this rolls out. So by no means right now are we determining any policy. We've been asking staff to show us the bylaw. Here it is, they're outlining a timeline, and we can make that determination down the road. Or you can just receive it and do nothing, and then everything current stands. But that doesn't work because then it really messes up compliance with really out of date matters. Councillor St. Pierre.
This is in response to councillor Bateman. As it happens, the timeline that was offered was actually, has us at step three already. So realistically, we just continue with what we're doing. And then our developers and builders, and we have the opportunity to work with the community to actually get us up to step four. Step four might look like maybe finding some way to make heat pumps more approachable. We're working on some ideas around that with local improvement charges and so on and so forth. And the triple pane glass windows, chances are, given that the whole province is turning over to this sort of thing, that's probably all that's going to be available, and it's going to be the bar set, and that's what homeowners are going to expect. So I don't think that the step four, you know, within four or five years, I think that's just going to follow and flow through. I don't think we're necessarily going to have to do a whole lot. Whenever there's been changes to the building code, it's always had a, made a blip. There's an increase in costs as people get trained up with the changes, they get themselves adjusted, and then they're in the groove again. I think the, our builders are going to be able to do the same thing that's always happened when we've had changes to the building code. I don't think, I don't think step is that scary. I think it looks scary, but I don't think it's, I think it's, and because the entire province is moving in that direction, I think we're going to be well supported, is my guess.
I think because everything takes so long, by targeting a twenty twenty-seven deadline would probably have us right in shape for twenty thirty-two. I mean, I don't mean that with any disrespect, but everything just takes so long that, when you look at processes all the time, even applying for a grant application, you wait a year and a half to see if you're even successful or longer. Like everything just takes a long time. And in the midst of this, there's a civic election, there's another provincial election. You could have the province, a new government come and make other changes, throw this out, enact something completely different. It's just, so I think it's just good to kind of follow the bouncing ball so that we move, you know, in a way that at least has consistency with building codes that are already in place. Other comments? So at this point, look for a motion to receive. I would like, say that the committee of the whole recommend that council receive the report on proposed building bylaw number seven eighty twenty twenty for information moved by councillor St. Pierre. Actually, hold that motion because we need public input. And so let's just table that motion for now. Mr. Broman. Please introduce yourself and turn on the microphone when you sit down, please.
John Broman, that's Broman Construction. I, I like to see changes. I know the governments are, and they're trying to talk. I think a lot of these changes are more for affordable housing. Lots of times, things seem to go the other way. You get more rules, more restrictions. Few things I see that brings alarm bells to me as architects and engineers, you know, when you get into a single family dwellings and stuff like that. Years ago, we got nailed many years ago into a home warranty. That was for leaky condos. The single family dwelling should have never got brought into that. That category's cost us a fortune in our housing costs, you know, it put us up ten thousand dollars. And a lot of their policies I don't believe in. It just, I look at it, their home warranty's only ten years. I've been building for forty-five years in Souk, and I built my first house. And it's still standing and running good, and I got cedar wood on it, and it works good. Ten year warranty, wasted time. You know, it's tough. The engineers and the architect stuff, that could, I don't know how it's going to come about. But I'm hoping what you guys are talking about, there'll be quite a few meetings that we can sit with the building staff. I enjoy the staff. When I don't know, they're changing all the time, I go ask them. You know, at times with them themselves, they don't even know what's coming at them, you know, it's coming pretty quick. So it's hard to understand. That's why I was here tonight. I didn't know what extent it was going to be, but I wanted to try to get involved and listen. Architects, we're doing a garage out west right now, and it ended up, we did it with timbers. I still sawmill timbers with our little son, I'll do very little. But in my past, I've done fifty percent of the custom homes out west. You know, five million dollar houses. The architect costs on most, on this garage that we're doing is higher than my timber frame package to build it. Then he ended up, you know, it gets scary. And it's a garage, a carport, open carport, didn't need it as far as I was concerned. But the building code now, when they start talking timbers, oh, you got to have an architect. And then we had to grade the, you know, I've had grading courses and I can grade the timbers. But it goes on and on, so a lot of this stuff can get kind of scary. I think there's a lot of improvement that we can do yet with heat systems. I've been using ductless heat pumps now, and they seem to be really, really good in our area. And trouble with the building codes that we're getting are coming from Ontario, all across Canada. We get stuck with some of the areas where, you know, we're damp. Heat pumps work good for us. In some areas, it don't work very good. They're expensive, you know, it brings up your costs, but. Codes are changing all the time. What I see, what I was more interested in on anything on this code is what's going to happen with duplexes. As far as I know, they can become legal fourplexes once this code is all common. You know, I've been talking with my surveyor about, you know, even on townhouses here right now. I can see we could have a collapse in townhouses and condos. We're not so much condos, but we're heavily into the townhouses coming here, left, right and center. And if people can't get insurance, which is already talking about, and in duplexes, because it's a strata and you're a joint building. That's where my own personal feeling is to separate the buildings. You can get individual insurance with individual, even on a duplex, if you split it. It's going to be a major problem because the cost is going to go up three to five times. You know, I found that out on Tomany Road. You know, all of a sudden, insurance, holy shit, we got to, we got to bank at the same place. You get your mortgages, you know, I deal with Coast Capital, they sell the insurance and that. And one duplex I did on Tomany, we had to get the same bankers, same insurance. So it gets difficult. And yeah, it's, I see a real problem with a lot of this stuff coming up. And how it's going to play out with the duplexes, like I'm not a hundred percent sure. You know, how they work up and above, whether they can be two units down, two units up. You do have one in Souk that was on Grant Road. It's a fourplex, it's a legal fourplex. It was together. Souk actually sold the developer the lot. It's on the top end of Grant Road here, not just over the hump here. That was a legal fourplex. And basically it was a duplex. So all this kind of stuff we should be looking at because all of a sudden you change your duplexes into fourplexes, you got twice as many cars in the yard. So when you get into a fourplex, I can see you're going to have to, if you go a straight duplex with no suites, six hundred square meters, if you're going to go higher, you got to start looking at your bylaws. I like, I love the, your house, affordable housing report. When you look in it, but you look in that report, I'll show you, I'll be coming at you here in a while. But there's some major problems with your zoning bylaws. In the middle of town, right in the middle of town, in your highest density, the minimum lot size is a thousand square meters under subdivision. That's huge. In the middle of town. If you're going to subdivide a free simple subdivision, you have to have a thousand square meters. I've seen all your lots pretty well in the, in your multifamily lots, it's on everyone. I have it on Maple Avenue, here it sits. So under a strata, a condominium strata, I, in my case, I could do eight units. Under the other, your other bylaws, even though I'm zoned in RM two, where you're seeing a lot of that go on, you force everybody to attach and go big, and we got to go to a condominium strata. If we go for a bare land strata, which I'd like to do because that separates, the strata's a third the cost of the deal and gets smaller. We can't do that, we have to do a thousand square meters. So in my case, I can do eight units. Right now, if I attach them all and go to the big, I call it the white elephant, or if I go individual, I can only put one house. I can do eight and go one, that's in the bylaws. There is some loophole, I've been going through the bylaws like crazy. Because it frustrates you, it really shows up on your, I could go through there with your affordable housing deal, and it shows all your deals and the densities for subdivision and that in there. It shows it right there, and you can see the mistake. Why is all the developers going out of town, out of this center area? Because they have to do thousand square meter lots. Hell, I'll go out here, you see one on the drawing board there for the three hundred and fifty square meter lots. In town, I got to do a thousand. And it don't make no sense. That to me is a mistake on how it's read and how the deal is, stuff like that.
So would that be in the zoning bylaw, Mr. Broman? Is that, okay?
And you got, you know, you can tweak it, you can read it different ways too.
Right.
You know, on my own deal coming up, I'm proposing for a bare land strata. It is a strata, it's not free simple. So and your bare land strata, you don't have no size limit in your lots. You can go down as most, you have one, the highest density that you got, you got two ways to go. You can go with a free simple deal, it's a thousand square meters. In the same zone, they put another amendment to it. And you can do, go down to a hundred and fifty square meters, a huge change. Under the condo, the, what do they call it, a row housing. A row housing lot on the one, but you don't have no properties owned at that at this point, there's none. But I looking at it, well, that's basically what you should be looking at. A lot of these townhouses, if a developer so wishes. A lot of the big guys want to join and get the maximum units and maximum size. I kind of worked the other way, thinking small and trying to do smaller places and affordable. And so I worked the other way, kind of, you know, look at my land costs, my building costs are expensive. My building costs are expensive, and it's gonna go up with this. I don't see it getting cheaper, but, you know, it might down the road, but I just, usually it don't. Usually the more regulations we're gonna bring in, all of a sudden, here are three coming in on the building code, triple-pane, where, triple-pane windows. You're wasting your money there. Put the money and insulation in the roof and in the walls. The windows from our single-glaze to a triple-glaze is 1% or 2% or whatever. It's so little, and you're paying a fortune for the triple. You know, the price just goes way high on them, and stuff like that, you know.
But anyways, thank you, Mr. Broman. This is the sort of feedback that, that would be helpful, and particularly when the builders have their sort of consultation, just as, because there'll be more. Maybe staff, if you can share a bit about what that consultation will look like? When you, when you have it, what sort of do you have planned for that?
Don't think we've ironed out the details, but were you invited to the developer session on building permits last year? So we will be reaching out to those same developers, and we'll be endeavoring to make sure that we, you know, invite a lot of our local developers and encourage them to come and provide feedback. But we will kind of break the bylaw down and go through the pieces one by one and ask for feedback and. Okay, go from there.
I tend to, like, here tonight, we can talk pretty free, because it's not a formal committee. And if you're gonna get started into this for the first few meetings, it'd be nice to be pretty loose. It was loose with the builders, part of it explaining a lot of stuff. You know, our economy basically is, our biggest economy is house development business, you know. It's huge, but there's a, we can improve on it a lot, I feel, with tweaking little things, you know. Not a huge change, but I thanks for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broman, for being here. And so as we're hearing, it'll be a more casual, interactive type of format. Staff will reach out to you, and then depending on what sort of response you get, you may need to have a few, depending on, you know, hopefully you'll get good response with that. Okay, was there other members of the public here to speak on the building bylaw? No? Okay. So we'll go back to Counselor St. Pierre's motion that, that he put out on the floor to receive for information, and that was moved. So any further discussion from members of council at this time? We're hearing we're at the start of a process here, so I think there's many times for you, as well, to share with your own networks of builders that you may know, some of the feedback that you may have already received. And I would just recommend that you direct them to the builder consultation day so that they can have a good discussion about those things. Okay, so I'll call the question then. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried unanimously. So that brings us to number three, which is our budget questions. And so I'm just going to open the report. We had made good progress, but ran out of time at the last meeting, so we're sort of just picking up from where we left off, if I see it. And here we have some, so is it, is it the same, where you'd like to just sort of go through the remaining items, just one at a time? Does that work for everybody? Okay, and it's 9:30, so let's see how we do here. Okay, so the first one here was that committee support funding. So there was requested funding for committees could be allocated from contingency rather than a separate line item, as they're not designated. Suggestion was made that committee support funding could be utilized for the new structure visioning process. The request is to fund $7,500 under council committees. Counselor McMath?
Through your worship to staff, just for clarity, what's the difference? Like, is there a benefit? Is there a consequence to moving this item into a different column?
Um, through your worship, I don't think it's necessarily moving it, it's just, it was in addition to the budget this year. So it's just seeking, I'm just looking for direction on, do we want to?
Where we wanna put it?
Include it in the budget this year, or later on this year? If funds for council-related support are required, then it would just be a matter of determining what budget potentially we could pull those funds from, whether that would be council contingency or not. So it's just more, not moving this $7,500 to a different line item. It would be either just keeping it as is or removing it, if that makes sense?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so at that, at this point, we don't have very many committees active at this time, so just suggesting that we leave it in here for support as needed. I sort of view council contingency as a, an avenue where we can fund some of the projects and priorities that we have underway. This is very administrative, so it would almost be that I would go to the CIO contingency for it rather than council contingency would be an idea. So, but here it is now, do we take or leave out the $7,500? So I'm looking for a mover, or Counselor Beddow's microphone?
I move, I move that, we remove it, we can, if something comes up, we can cover it under the other contingency. Take it out, please.
Okay, so the motion is that we remove the committee support funding. And, and really, I think, you know, that's totally fine. There's no second or required, so. Anything further? Counselor St. Pierre?
I think I would support that. We've got a precedent with the Climate Action Committee for actually supporting those committees, and I assume that we're gonna try and keep on supporting our committees. We'll find a means as it comes along, so I don't think, I don't think we need a line item for this at this point in time.
Nope. Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, opposed, that's carried unanimously to remove, okay? Next is S. School District 62 has put out a request for $9,000 for crossing guards. We've received a response that this would be, the probable location would be MCS or Poyet-Journey. We have the crossing guards at Suuk Elementary, Cecinos, and John Muir, and this would add to it. So it's for the school days, and it would be for Suuk. I, my thoughts are that we leave it in. The highway's getting busier and busier. We're trying to encourage students to, to walk or bike to school. Not all seem to be able to, we're just having issues with a busy highway, and people are not seeing pedestrians, even when there's crosswalks. Counselor McMath?
So it says the probable location could be the Edward Mill Community School or Poyet-Journey. So Journey is sort of off, it's not right on the highway. Is the suggestion that the crossing guard be at the lit pedestrian crosswalk on the highway? And is that brought forward because of issues or accidents that have occurred there?
I don't recall who I talked to, but part of it was because of, there, there are issues with people not stopping on the highway, even though the pedestrian light is activated. There was a student that was hit recently. It's not the first near miss that I've observed in there. Usually, you don't often see crossing guards at a high school, but we have a problem with our students being able to navigate there safely. Or Throop Road is also a very busy, it's, it's very busy during school hours as, as parents go to do drop-off and the like. So I think it's just to give, we're understanding it's for Suuk, and the school district would probably determine where the best allocation would be. Counselor, anything else, McMath?
Is there a clause that guarantees that in this contribution?
Be good to know, because that would be what I, would it, like, I would be comfortable funding it, provided that the funds remain in Suuk, I'm not.
The position, yeah.
Right.
Um, through your worship, yeah, it was just a letter that was sent to the district, just seeking the funds. So if this is approved by council, I can, we can follow up with them and just confirm that this funding is approved contingent on it remaining in Suuk. But by the answer that we asked for the question was that it is intended to be in Suuk specific schools. So we can just clarify that in response back to them, letting them know the positive or negative of including, billing us for the additional crossing guard.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor St. Pierre?
I would support keeping this in. Given that someone's already been hit, and there have been probably many near misses, having said that, I'm curious about high school students not knowing to look both ways. And I'm curious as to whether or not they should maybe invest in educating their student population on how to cross roads safely, you know, for their long-term future, when there's no crossing guards to hold their hands?
Well, that's where the crossing guards might indicate a change there.
It just kinda surprised me.
I think younger children seem to be more in tune with looking both ways than older do, for whatever, you know, because it's, you know, you, stop, look both ways, and they're, they do that. And then over time, perhaps not as much. Counselor Beddow's? Sorry, Bateman, afters?
Oh, okay, I would like to have a crossing guard at that, that light by the school, Edward Mill Community School. Frustrating part for me sometimes is that you just have a steady progression of kids that go, ones who come hit the light, and 10 feet behind them, another one hit the light 10 feet behind them. You can stop that traffic for a while. If there was a person there, you could at least have them hold up. So there's 10 of them, then let them cross. So I'd be all, all for it for Edward Mill.
Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, so at the last EMCS Society meeting, we were talking about teenagers, hormonal change, brain fog. So I can understand why that might be an issue. So I'd like to move that the committee, the whole, recommend that council director of finance to include the 9K for an additional crossing guard for School District 62 in the 2020-24 five-year financial plan bylaw.
Can I add an amendment to this? Contingent that the, these funds remain in the Suuk municipality? Are you okay with the amendment?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that was sort of the discussion.
Yeah, exactly.
Good. Okay, anything from anyone else? Okay, call the question, then all those in favor, opposed, it's carried unanimously. Counselor?
I'll recuse.
Okay, you just, you're past president of the EMCS Society. Okay, so Counselor Bateman will step out for this. So we discussed the Edward Mill Community School theater seats, and had put in initial, when we heard those presentations, we heard a few, to put in $45,000. I seem to recall that the remaining $100,000 were funded by SD 62, the school district, and maybe another partner, or maybe fully from the school district? I don't remember now.
Yeah, it was approximately 50% each were coming from the school. And then the school district had also promised $50,000, and I believe there was a shortfall of $40,000 to $50,000, based on their new quote.
Okay, so here it is now, and that's where we left it. So we can include it, we can remove it, we can reduce it, we can increase it. It's up to you, though I wouldn't recommend increasing it.
Amy Hart is out there.
No. Counselor LaGenes?
Is, is there another source of funding, like, through the CRD Arts Commission or something?
Probably not for theater seats, but I don't know what that grant requirement is. So it could be the case, like, I don't, I don't know, you, you would be more of a subject matter expert on that. But there, we had, they had applied for a community grant, and I think, I don't remember, it was too late, or the amount, we needed more information. But anyway, it was a sequence of discussions through the, through most of last year that brought us to this decision here.
Um, through your worship, like, they came a couple times last year and gave different presentations. I believe one of them was around the community grant time. And then because of the amount that they needed was in excess of our community grant policy, it was recommended that they come back and request, like, a one-off funding request. So, and I believe they mentioned in their previous presentations, they've been looking for any grants available and doing various fundraising, et cetera, to raise the funds they've received so far. So when they got the commitment from School District 62 for approximately $50,000, I believe it was, they were just kind of seeking some sort of resolution from council, one way or the other. I think they've been here at least two times that I know of.
Yeah, two times, I believe, maybe, maybe even three. One could have been a delegation, and I think then we requested them back for further information on another time, yeah. Counselor McMath?
Through your worship to staff, how much is in the, sorry, Suuk Program of Arts Reserve?
$60,000, maybe? $55,000?
The estimated balance at the end of 2020 would be $17,000, because there's $50,000 allocated for the memorial wall out of that fund, and then there's $10,000 annually that's funded for various spa capital projects throughout the community. So that $10,000 is kind of a line item every year. And then there's a $50,000 addition from 2019 that's carried forward to this year in regards to the funding for the memorial wall at Wiffen Spit. So that's why the balance is down to approximately 17.
Just food for thought, if we are still going to be discussing the direction of the memorial wall for Wiffen Spit, there's the potential that we could use part of that reserve to go towards these seats while it happens now?
I don't know, like, I'm not comfortable that that meets the criteria of a program of the arts. Usually that's visible public art out in the community. This is theater infrastructure, so.
Theater infrastructure that supports the community of the arts, though?
Yeah, I, I don't know if, if it fits.
They're just floating it out there.
I, I would not support that, because I would rather see that the intent of that was, let's beautify our town. And I, I hear what you're saying, because it's like, I wonder if that would fit. I think it's, it's not sort of the spirit of how that fund was established. Counselor Beddow's?
Yeah, through your worship to staff, I remember when they were here, and someone has to jog my memory, but there was a little discussion on why, I mean, it's like they needed $150,000, and it was all or nothing, that there was no planned, I mean, right now, the seats that are in disrepair are, you know, 30, 40, and they're going to replace all of them. Is, is that, do I remember that right?
Yeah, they, there was some discussion when we asked them about phasing in, is, and it's, it's, they're also looking to redesign the theater and to make accessibility improvements and the like, and that's why it's all sort of coming out in, in one shot, because of that.
Yeah, and I guess I, having a little bit of a problem with it in that, you know, the EMCS Society, their role is to manage that resource and plan for it and fund it and all that sort of stuff. And yet, they're coming to us for a good chunk of change, and I'm not comfortable with $40,000, or $45,000.
So an option would be to reduce it and just say, okay, we can do this, and then they would continue to explore grant or other fundraising opportunities, which is much like many.
I'm sort of leaning that way, I, you know, I know it's a community asset, and I mean, you, you don't get it cheap if you need to go rent it, I tell you. But I, I can't support $45,000, so I'll be interested by other councils, I have to say.
Counselor St. Pierre?
I was feeling more or less the same, just given how we've been dealing with the various other items. I was thinking that something more like $25,000 felt more comfortable to me. But I'm just throwing that out there as a ballpark.
Okay, so Counselor LaGenes?
How about we just cut it in half and make it 22.5?
Let's just go with 25. Counsel, it's like, we're, we're, we're now just, to staff, and then I'll go back to Counselor McMath.
Through your worship, just to confirm, we have pulled up the spa reserve bylaw, and it can only be used for the purpose of public art projects, so it would not be appropriate to expend funds from that reserve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McMath?
If we're giving them, like, 20, 25, whatever, they still can't complete the project until they get around that $150,000 mark. So what is the point of giving them $20,000 right now, if they're still not gonna be able to complete the project this year? Playing devil's advocate here.
The other, I guess the other is, they may then return next year, or, you know, it'll be an ongoing. They'll, they'll still be short. it'll be an ongoing, they'll, they'll still be short. They'll likely start looking for other avenues to fund that, you know, which is fine. But every group in SUUC is, is fundraising and trying to find funds and always trying to manage. So it's, in this case, sort of reducing it, and then they can't do anything with it, and then have to return. Like, it just leaves us, the theater is not accessible, as we know. And that's why now, like, this, this work needs to happen. It's not just a high school, it is a community school that has many different events, probably more outside of school events. And it's, it's just, it, it serves itself well for that. Lots of parking, single level, commercial kitchen, like, there's just a lot of opportunities. So I'm just sort of inclined just to, just to fund it. And so I don't, we don't have groups coming back over and over again, because we have a never-ending list, and, and they just get on with it. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, I'm more in favor of funding it for $25,000 and see what they come up with.
So is that your motion, that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct the, direct, the director of finance to include $25,000 for theater seats at EMCS in the 2024 five-year financial plan bylaw?
That is my motion.
Okay. Discussion on the motion, $25,000. Counselor St. Pierre, then McMath?
As I recall, they were also planning on doing further seat sales and continuing their fundraising. This just gives them an extra boost to get them closer to their target. Now would be up to them to make up the difference, and I think that's reasonable.
Counselor McMath?
Or do you want the addition that the remaining $20,000, $25,000 is put into the financial plan for 2021?
Well, I think that was, is just an aside. So why don't we deal with this one motion and, you know, and we'll see. Because if they, it's likely that if they do not have success fundraising, they will, they will return. Counselor McMath?
Also, can there be, I'm not sure how to frame it. If we give them $25,000, can there be a project deadline or some sort of accountability for, say, this project never comes to fruition, or not all that money is used because there are remaining fundraising is, is in great excess? How do you, just looking for accountability for that $25,000?
Well, I think that's some work, policy work that our director of finance has already started on. So, you know, if they don't repair the seats, we will know about it. We will hear about it. Because already, like, you can see where some seats have been taken out completely, like, they're, when they're falling apart and they just don't work. They, they don't exist at all. So as, you know, we will, we will know that.
But do we have any, through your worship to staff, do we have any, like, even though we see it and they don't do it, is there any legal, like, course of action to take to take that money back? Like, if we don't give any, if we don't give, like, a completion date, if we don't give any expectations or guidelines, then theoretically, they don't have, they can do what they please, correct?
Well, I mean, it's similar, through your worship, I guess it would be similar to kind of like the agreements we have for community service agreements or community grants program, where we have a policy that kind of dictates what our expectations are to receive the funding. So this is, while it's a line item, it's a little bit of a different scenario. I would defer to, to probably doing something along those lines is kind of indicating this funding is contingent on XYZ. As far as giving them a deadline, I don't know how that would work, because if they're also still need to do further fundraising, I, I'm not sure how that could be enforceable from our end. I guess if they can't do the rest of the fundraising within the timeframe we've allocated, but we've still committed to the funds. So it just would depend, like, some organizations will just send us an invoice if it's project-specific. Once the project's, like, we would say we'll pay for X percentage of it. Or other, other organizations just invoice us, you know, as soon as the budget gets approved, they send us an invoice for their full year amount. So we can kind of just, whatever council's comfort level is, is just make a specific arrangement similar to what we do with community grants and just outline some specific requests we would like back from them.
That's important.
Reports, et cetera.
They, they may end up having to hold the funds into next year if they're still not able to raise all the funds for completion. So, but at least this way, it gets them closer to their target. And, and we'll see what happens. But I don't want to impose a deadline on this if they're still needing more time to raise the funds, because I think, but I do feel that in general, we need to look at a policy for all of the service agreements and the other items that we have line items on. But I think that will follow after we get through the budget. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor here. Anything else? Call the question, then. All those in favor, opposed, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. Can we get Counselor Bateman returned? The next one is travel conferences, education reduction. So here's a recommendation that we reduce the travel conference education budget from 40 to 30,000. So is this for council?
Correct. Originally, the budget was $30,000 annually, but last year, it was increased to 40,000 because of the election. And presumably, more council, we're going to be traveling to more events. But then a discussion, I believe, at the service level review meeting was to keep the budget status quo. So status quo was technically $40,000. So, whereas normally it would have reverted back to $30,000. So it's just seeking direction from council if you would like to go back to the 2018 amount of $30,000.
Do you know what our 2019 actuals were?
Yes.
What?
$49,000.
Okay. Okay, so, mind you, we don't have as many people traveling to everything. Like, there was full of tendons.
Correct. And, and, sorry to cut you off there. It was also, there was, the FCM was, I believe, in Quebec. So it was more expensive travel that was occurring this, in 2019 than presumably would occur in 2020 as well. So that was just. Yeah, so like, it, it was just, travel was just a lot more expensive heading back east than normally it is.
Okay, well, FCM is in Toronto this year. So there, there's only four instead of six members of council scheduling to going. UBCM, we have, we have already made a determination to stay in town. There is savings, though, because all of my, I don't have any travel expenses this year, because they're covered by the UBCM. So in that way, while I will be attending everything, it's, it's a savings to the District of SUUC this year. Won't be next year, though. Counselor Betos, and then McMath?
Funny, we discussed this at length before, and it's exactly the same things that have come up. Our, our needs this coming year are going to be less.
Yeah.
No doubt about it. FCM accounted for a great portion of that money, right? And we all went. And I think we took the CAO and everybody.
Six, one.
Yeah, six, one. Anyways, this year, it's not, you're, four of us are going, and yours is paid anyway. So now we're down to three, and that was a big budget, the budget. UBCM is going to be a lot less, so I'm more comfortable with the 30,000. We have to, we have to shave some money off this budget for the taxpayers. So I'm, I'm okay with 30,000.
Okay, Counselor St. Pierre?
I would tend to agree with the proviso that we consider future years where if FCM is happening, I think in St. John's and in Montreal. So we're back up to higher-cost events with.
Montreal and then Saskatchewan.
Sorry, Montreal and Saskatchewan. But then you will no longer be president of the UBCM. So at that point.
No, so if I go, then we, we would have to pay.
Those costs are going to go back up.
We can keep looking at it. But there's savings this year.
There's savings this year.
Counselor McMath?
I'm going to make the motion that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct the director of finance to reduce council's travel slash conference slash education to $30,000 in the 2024 five-year financial plan bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, opposed, it's carried unanimously. The next one is the, is the advertising budget. So I'm, why are we doubling this?
Through your worship, it's not, it was actually reduced by half.
Oh, okay.
And then there was a conversation about, do we need to potentially leave it as is, with the communications position being filled, and they need room. And so it was just recommended initially to reduce it in half. And so it's just coming forward to seek some clarity on, do you want it to remain at the reduction, or somewhere in the middle, or go to the full amount, which was originally 34,000?
Okay, well, I think we're looking for savings across the board. So maybe 25,000. It still gives room for the communications officer, who won't be starting right now anyway. You know, so we're, we're, we're kind of out a bit of a year. Ms. Machado?
If I may, your worship, the reason for going back up was the discussion held at the media training session to perhaps do those op-eds, I think they were called, so the, where the district can pay the media to write a story, and it, but it, and it looks like a story in the paper, but it's actually a paid advertisement to get some more communication going with the community.
Maybe, but I just struggle with buying our way into a publication. I think if it's a good story, then we should be pitching it, and they should pick it up. And then there's all of social media and, and other ways to communicate out, rather than just one relying on one entity. There's, there's all sorts of digital means and the like. And we have no control over placement. We can write a good piece, and then, as I've seen, have a not-so-friendly piece above that gets more attraction, because that's the one that's covered, as opposed to the one that's purchased. So I'm not sold that this is a good idea. Counselor Mc, Bateman, then McMath?
Yeah, I'd agree with that. The question of placement is an issue, because the one placement we did last year.
It was terrible.
Yeah, it was a very controversial article above it, which didn't go well. Buying ads and placing pre-written material by our communications director in our one Black Press alternative is not a bad idea. But yeah, let's, let's stick to 25,000. Sure. No?
Counselor McMath?
I think with the timing of the communications position coming in sort of halfway through the year, and then I had heard that the SUUC News Mirror had a standing offer of a free op-ed, I can't pronounce it. So I would, if that offer is, is accurate and is on the table, then I would take that, and I would, I would leave spending money on that until the communications officer was, was, had got traction in their position. So I would make the motion that, where are we? That the committee of the whole.
The blue part.
Okay. Well, it's, or, that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct the director of finance to set the advertising budget as $16,000 in the 2020-24 five-year financial plan bylaw.
Okay, so that's been moved. I tend to think that a mail-out, that goes right. I mean, we put additional mail into the property tax piece, but nowadays, nobody really gets any nice mail anymore. So like, a nice mail, nice letter inside would actually get read as opposed to, and something online. Anyways, okay, that's been moved. Any discussion on 16,000? Counselor St. Pierre?
Before moving on this, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Your worship to staff, what are we spending right now on advertising without a communication person?
Yeah, the, the 2019 expenditures were right around the 16,000 mark. And that is for public hearing notices and our required advertising around the financial plan bylaw adoption and things like that. What we had planned to reduce going from the 34 to the 16,000 was eliminating the weekly advertising of meetings, which we are not required legislatively to do. And we would just be doing that on our, we have to do it once annually. We're required to do that, which we do in January, and then just advertise them on our website.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's enough. I think there's still, you still need to, because nobody keeps, like, we, we do put in the whole annual schedule, but I, I, I'd be surprised if anyone actually cut that out and put it on their fridge for reference points. And then we call meetings, or meetings get canceled, like, they change. So I think just having some, like, a presence there is important. So that's where I don't think 16,000 is enough. I think it needs to be around 25. And also, just to take, take advantage of other opportunities. Like, we do have an online, you know, we do have the Pocket News that would also help for certain things, that we would want to get the word out. It's a different readership entirely than what's in print. So I, I, I think just, you know, while I can appreciate that, you know, we're not required to have the notice, so we take it out. But then people kind of lose, we just lose traction. I just think there still needs to be an indicator that there's a meeting that's happening. And maybe the communications officer could then look at how to make that ad more appealing. You know, come Budget 101 or something, rather than, there's a meeting tonight. Like, there could be more of a draw. So I don't think this is enough. I think we need to have some room there, rather than just the requirements.
Carolyn, your microphone.
Counselor St. Pierre?
Okay. So at 16K, we're basically maintaining the status quo in terms of basic communication with the community?
It's the basic requirements by law.
But the 16,000 that we're looking at here doesn't actually allow our communication person any latitude. So we're, we're essentially hiring an expensive carpenter, but not providing any nails. I don't know if that's really our best move.
I don't know. I think it should be.
So I think we need to provide at least some latitude for some work to happen there.
Yeah, I, I think 25,000 is good. Counselor McMath?
I think the SUUC communications officer will have their hands full with giving the District of SUUC an online presence that it doesn't have remotely, and that you would get way more engagement from your online interaction than your paper. It's not that we would do away with it completely. It's just that that person will have other projects, I think, to focus on in the five months that they'll be here.
Counselor St. Pierre?
I think at this point, without a communication strategy and without this person in place, assuming that they won't need any additional resources is not something I'd want to do. I would prefer to provide at least some resources.
Okay, Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, I think we need to go with the 25,000. The communications coordinator will come in, will have the expertise to direct us forward, and doesn't have to spend the 25,000, but it's in the budget. There's also the CAO contingency, which I think he could, he could pull some funds out.
But there would need to be a process to have, like, there would be a report that would come allocating. And any report we, we, that staff generates is an expense, and something else gets pushed. So I agree that having that latitude there, and if it's someone that needs over and above, then we'll deal with the, the recommendation. I just feel this is too tight. But I'm, we're sort of talking around, so I want to call the question on this, and then we will take next steps if we're not, depending on the outcome. Okay? So right now, we have a motion on the floor for 16,000. So I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Counselor St. Pierre, Counselor Lajeness, Counselor Bateman, and myself are all opposed, so that's defeated. So I'll look for a motion then, 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 that the committee of the whole recommend that council direct the director of finance to set the advertising budget as 25,000 in the 2020 to 24, five-year financial plan bylaw. Moved by Counselor Bateman. Anything more to add on this? Counselor Betos?
Yeah, I disagree. I would have been happy around 20,000. They're bumped from 16 to 20, but the motion's on the floor.
Yeah, at least it's down from 34, because that's where it's bounced up to. So I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed. Counselor McMath and Betos are opposed. Motion's carried. Okay, next is the memorial wall. So in this case, we have this plan for Wiffen Spit. This was raised by a member of the community, but it is all from the SUUC Program of the Arts Reserve, so there would be no impact on taxes. And we were waiting for a report to come with some options. So I would like us to continue on that. But you're asking here, I would just leave it till we leave it, because we gave direction to staff just to look at options and what that would look like. So I would like to just have staff come back, and then we can determine what we're going to do. But at this point, I would say that the last resolution, when we received all the materials, it was still sitting at 50,000. So I don't really want to change that without receiving an up-to-date report on that project. Ms. Gray?
Correct. And then at some of the subsequent meetings, there was a lot of conversations about the memorial wall, which is why I'm just seeking confirmation, because some of the counselors have mentioned just removing it, et cetera. And so I just wanted to confirm, are we still just going, should we still just keep it in here as stated, it's being funded from the spa reserve, and then a future report to come could indicate an updated design, budget, et cetera.
Okay.
But.
But right now, there's no impact on taxes, because it's all in the spa reserve.
Correct. It's funded through the spa reserve, and it's a carryover from last year. So it's just, through the online survey, as well as council conversations, it, it was kind of not well-received. So it was just, if councils changed their option, you know, their mind on how, on this. So it was just if councils changed their option, you know, their mind on how, on this project, then it's just a project we can remove from the budget and not have it showing there if...
Gotcha.
...council chose to go a different way.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bateman?
Well, I was just going to note, as, as Ms. Gray noted there, that the public feedback was not good for the Memorial Wall. And yet, yes, indeed, it's coming out of a reserve fund. And of course, if you don't take the money out of the reserve fund, then the reserve fund remains healthier than it might be. But I agree that there's a process underway. And now that, and again, context, this started earlier in this process when we, we were trying very hard to reduce that 6.58 or whatever it was. And I think we've succeeded in driving that number down significantly, potentially.
Back to staff, Ms. Machado?
Yeah.
Through Your Worship, just a reminder that the memorial bench policy or the memorial policy that council recently adopted was surrounding the framework of the memorial wall. Like, that is a built-in part of the policy that's been adopted. So there really needs to be some intent of council to build something at Whiff and Spit to accommodate those plaques that will come off the benches.
Counselor McMath?
I think it's not the reserve that's really in question. It's the direction of the memorial wall and there's, like, we can go into more detail later, but I don't know if this is the opportunity for, for that direction to come through. But as far as like the design that was presented, I wasn't for it for multiple reasons. One was that it still offers a limitation to the amount of plaques that can go on there. Not to mention the design for $50,000, in my opinion, it's not worth it. But what I would like to see as a suggestion for staff to look into when they're reviewing the wall is something similar to the Sarah, Sarah Beckett Memorial, which had bricks that people could purchase, much like the plaques that go on these benches. And that the contributions in excess of that go towards maintaining the bricks if they're damaged, but then also to something like a park. And so my preference is that this memorial wall head more in that direction. And so I think as far as, like, the $50,000 can stay there, that's fine. But I just think the direction of the project is what's up for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Beddows.
Yeah, I, I thought the whole idea of the memorial wall was a piece of art. So I don't agree with Counselor McMath that we put up a brick wall with, I don't think that's very artsy. Well, that's right. That's how I understood it. But anyways, my, my recollection is when we had the discussion, there wasn't a great deal of opposition to the memorial. There was just, they didn't particularly like that design. I didn't have a problem with it. And they were to go back to, come back with another design. But the whole premise of having a piece of art down at Whiff and Spit, I thought, was well-received by the community. That's just my impression.
Yeah. This has been outstanding since 2014, when the policy was changed and adopted. And then it's been vetted by two committees now. So, you know, and then that was sort of where, oops, where we left it was, okay, can we just see what other options may exist here or there? And, you know, that's the piece. So I say, I would like to see us just leave it in there. We'll examine those options and, and make the determination at that time. But the project needs to keep rolling. And I think what staff need is, do we want this project to happen? Yes, I think it's very important. Point to note that our cemetery may be out of room and people don't have places. And those that have passed have no voice in the matter. So I'd like to just see us stay the course with this and get it done this year. So I'm looking for a motion. Counselor St. Pierre?
I'd move the Committee of the Whole recommend...
You don't have your microphone on.
Now, the Committee of the Whole recommend that council direct the Director of Finance to leave the 50K allocated to the Memorial Wall project in the 2020, 2024 five-year financial plan by law.
Okay, that's moved. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Pose is carried unanimously. Next is Chirp Church, Chirp and Throop, Church and Throop Design Designs. Over to staff.
So this wasn't necessarily a specific resolution, just some questions came up, just asking for a bit for information on why these two projects were chosen. So I just connected with the appropriate staff. And so this is just providing you a bit more information on why those two projects were chosen for 2020 before we received the final transportation master plan. And it's basically because we're fairly confident those projects will be recommended to be moving forward in the transportation master plan. And there are actually two roads that we can use our DCC funds for. So it, instead of waiting for the transportation master plan, the engineering staff is requesting to start those projects once the budget's been approved. So this is just for information. I don't know if we necessarily need a resolution unless council would like to do something different with it. And, and as far as the rest of the report goes, it's just information. That was all the specific questions I had heard. If there's other questions you guys have on the budget, council has on the budget, we could discuss.
Okay, Counselor McMath and St. Pierre?
After the 122,000 and 156,000, how much is left in the reserves?
Approximately $2.6 million.
Thank you.
Counselor St. Pierre?
As I understand it, these are important connectors, critical connectors based on our transportation master plan. And the money's coming from DCCs and gas taxes and will not affect property taxes. So I'd like to move the motion.
There actually isn't a motion. It was more just staff providing this for information, but I think as the work comes, then they'll report to us accordingly.
All right.
So, because it's not, it's not a tax implication. Counselor Beddows?
Yay, thank you.
Okay. Get on this side. Okay, so that seems to bring us to the end of our outstanding items. Are there other items that council would like to raise or bring forward? Because really, what staff will need to do, and we'll, I'll go to the public for any input, but is there going to take all of this? We are going to come out of Committee of the Whole into special counsel meeting to ratify these decisions. And then in two weeks' time, one week's time, two weeks' time, one week's time, our Director of Finance will be changing everything and then will bring that forward for us to consider at an amended third reading. That's why we have a special counsel meeting tonight, so we can just keep moving and progressing the work. So is there any other changes or anything that you would like to do with the budget? Counselor McMath?
I was just looking for a, just basically a detailed finance report. One second here. Sorry, I closed it. From, and I might, Chief Mount, maybe you will correct me. I think it's the Volunteer Association Volunteer, help me, chief. Essentially, the Volunteer Association receives about $37,000 each year. And the idea behind that is a program to help incentivize volunteers to, to participate and to basically keep them engaged and keep the, the interaction and the employment there. But just as we transitioned to paid-on-call, I was just looking for a financial breakdown of that $37,000 because theoretically, if we're transitioning to paid-on-call, then that pool should, should shrink as the paid-on-call system grows.
Your Worship, Counselor McMath, I do have a meeting with the Association tomorrow to discuss looking at getting some of that information as soon as possible. And I would tend to agree that there's an understanding through the Association that, that money there was really meant for the Association. As we transition to paid-on-call, there's probably less interdependency on what the Association really means and what it's doing. There's also been discussions with respect to the gym being more inclusive and transferring some of the assets and equipment back to the district there. So there's quite a bit of discussions over the next couple of weeks that I expect to have with the Association and provide further clarity on where that line item could change and end up being.
Can I follow? If I may? Yeah, please. And just in that same thread, it's not for right now and we've already sort of touched on it, but how, like, we have community service agreements, line items like this, how we have measurables and accountability for those, those programs, I think, is, is not, perhaps not right now, but later for us to review after the budget.
Yeah, part of the discussions I've had with our acting CAO is that we do need to look at establishing a policy where when we have funds that are set into line items, that there's a report-back mechanism as to what those are for and if it's, you know, if it's, you know, maybe just a receded copy to, as some accountability back. And then also to reexamine in the service agreements, what is a reasonable reporting structure? And, and what would that look like going forward and to have that back? So that's all things that I think are timely. And then there is some, we had some conversation about transitioning, you know, line item like, no one really knows what that means. Like, when you take it to another community, it's like, what? You know, and that's where it's timely, then those should transition to a service agreement. And then this is, you know, it's a boilerplate document and then your Schedule A lists off, you know, it's the food bank, blah, 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 blah. And then it, it just tightens all that up. And then the rest sort of fall into the community grant and then we have a policy that's there. And then that way, it, it just, we're not sort of remembering what this one's for. Or is, or what we've seen in the past is that the group really no longer requires the funds for that purpose. So it may have been a program for a while and then things changed, but then I think it's just timely. So then we can look at what makes the most sense. So it's not to be punitive. It's just, I think it's timely that it, there's an accountability element.
And then a fairness and consistency across the board.
Across the board for everyone.
Each group gets money. It's not one set of rules for this group and one for another. And then, through Your Worship, to staff, in your opinion, what are this, what's the status of all our reserves? Because this group is trying to rectify 0% tax increases or tax increases that haven't kept up to maintain infrastructure and reserves have been drained to lower that tax. Well, for short-term gratification, that's great, but long-term, it's actually detrimental. And that's why we have high tax increases now. So in your opinion, like, with the status of our reserves, while we're looking to trim, should we also be looking at putting more money into reserves so that we're back on track?
Through Your Worship, I, I maybe, I think I talked about this briefly at the last meeting that, that you weren't there. And, and when it comes to reserves, like, my opinion is, yes, they're not sufficiently funded for what we need to do. But we also don't, for some programs we have, or some assets, we have, you know, good asset management plans. Other ones, we're still in the process of developing them. So the, the plan being would be later this year is to kind of come back to council with a more thorough report on all of our reserves and the current status of them, what they can be used for, if there's any reserves potentially we could combine, or do we need a new reserve? Some of them have minimum levels. It's kind of all the bylaws are, some are more detailed and provide more specifics than others. And then as well, combine that with the asset management reporting that we can get out of our asset software. We had a new module added last year. So that'll give us some real sound financial numbers to present to council with sound recommendations on potential changes to the current reserves bylaws that we have and how we should fund these to adequately set us up for success in the future. So I don't know the answer 100% right now. I know what we've got in here isn't sustainable long-term. And so as far as specific numbers, that'll kind of come later in the year as we have more time to look at our current assets in our system and review them against our current bylaws and then come to council with some recommendations on how to change or recommended options going forward for how to fund reserves.
Are there some, sorry to interrupt, are there some reserves that, like, you would flag, like, red right now based off the 2020 budget?
Well, you know, like, things like capital assessment replacement reserve, that's a heavily-used reserve. And our minimum contribution per the bylaw is only $13,000 a year. So we contribute another $260,000 a year just to fund it, to fund the assets that we need. So, you know, like, the one, any ones that are kind of getting...
Like, based off, like, so the capital assessment replacement reserve, if things are pulled as they're drafted to be right now, what will be the remainder balance at the end of the year?
If, I believe, like, for some of the capital items that have already been pulled for this year?
So for, like, in the draft budget right now, the way that those, like, items, if they're, if they were all green-lighted right now, what would be the final tally in the capital asset reserve?
Yep, it is $326.
Yeah. Like, that's ridiculous.
So, so, yeah, that's why if you, you know...
So I wouldn't, that's like an item that I wouldn't wait to discuss after budget. Like, I think that's a conversation piece for us to have right now. And I know everybody is swamped with work and so busy. I just think as far as, like, a review of the reserves though, that's something that should come before we finalize our budget.
Well, and as you can see, like, the projects that are being funded with capital asset replacement reserve are included on page 12 there of the big document. So it's a matter of if you would like to defer some of those projects as a way to leave the fund at a more reasonable balance.
Is there any other reserve that will have a similarly-low amount?
I mean, some of them are dictated by the amount of monies we receive from external agencies. So it's a little different, like, whereas capital asset replacement is district-funded. You know, things like gas tax, that's dictated by what we receive. The casino reserve is just money that we receive from casino revenue. So that one's again small, but there's not, you know, and basically, the only way to save some money from the reserves for this year would be to not go forward with some of the projects that are currently in the 2020 capital plan because that's, as you can see from the big list on there, all these reserves are what's funding all of these projects. So if council wants to reprioritize some of these projects, obviously that money would go back into the reserve funds.
And then just for, like, food for thought, and then I will end my microphone session here, sorry. So it's 256,000 is for fire debt servicing, correct? Correct. So just in, and I'm not picking on fire, although it might feel like it right now. Just like as we look forward, like, I think there, maybe we could have a bit more discussion about how we set ourselves up so we're not having to borrow in the future. So I know we're trying to trim right now, but it's just a piece for discussion.
Counselor Beddows?
My question to the chair, if it was gray, are, are you asking for your departments, all the departments, to come through with having a look at their budget and see where they can pare down?
Through Your Worship, that process kind of happened with the budget that was presented to, to council. So that's part of the process of these, having these meetings was to find out...
This is the bare bones from, from the different departments.
I mean, that, this is what each department has, has recommended. So any additions to the budget and/or reductions have been presented to council at the service, no, at the service-level review meeting. There was a separate presentation just on department requests. And so some of them, like advertising, was requesting to decrease their budget by 16,000. Other departments were requesting small increases.
Can you give us an idea of where it sits now for the tax increase? It was a 6.5 or something? Have we got any feel for what we're at now? And do we have to go back and look for some more savings?
I think, I don't want to speak publicly prematurely and get hopes up. But I mean, you've, council has definitely done a great job of, of trimming some of the fat from the budget. And so I would need to kind of take all this away because it's a complicated, with capital projects, I can fund them certain ways, so that could potentially change the...
So my request is a little premature than you thought.
So, yeah, so, so the plan would be is to, once these resolutions have been passed, is for me to go away in the next day and a half because the agenda has to be finalized on Thursday afternoon and recalculate all these numbers and then come with a new amended version of, of the draft for the February 24 council meeting. So, but definitely, I mean, council has cut significant big-dollar projects. So that will have, as you know, approximately $80,000 is a 1% property tax increase. So I think it's safe to say at least $80,000 has been cut for sure from the budget so far. So as far as further numbers, I just don't want to speak on that yet till I had a chance to calculate it all.
Okay, I'm happy with you doing your job. That's fine. Looks to me like we're going in the right direction, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, I'll call, I'd like to turn to the members of the public, just while we have some time. Okay. Any members of the public have any commentary, please?
There's a character there, Kirk, who wears so many hats in town and he's always, anyways, I kind of like the Kirk. Today...
Today, you are Britt Santowski, though.
Yes.
We need that for the record.
Britt Santowski, and live on Church Street. And just listening to what you guys are talking tonight, the one thing I would really like to draw your attention to is the theater as a community resource. I do sit on that committee. I do sit on that committee, the EMCS Society, and I'm not speaking on their behalf right now, because they don't have enough knowledge to do that, but I do know that they have been working for two years trying to raise these funds, and my understanding, and, and too many hats, too much information in my head in any given time, but they might risk losing funding. I would recommend, before you make a final decision on this, to actually get somebody from the society, Anne, or somebody like that, to talk about that. Because if we lost funding, I think that the EMCS Society, I think that that resource is such an incredibly valuable community resource. If you look at multiplier effect of something, it is a movie theater, it houses SUK Harbor players, it brings in people from out of town, we had the election debate there last year, SUK Talks comes out of there, there's talent nights that engage youth, it's used on fundraisers for many of these events, the EMCS fashion show happens there, the Arts Academy uses that, and the Dance Studio has used that, it engages youth, where we have nothing in SUK that does that, there's no equivalent to me. This, to me, is really an anchor part of our community. I know that they have worked hard trying to raise the money for the seats, and I know that they came here with a higher number, and they have whittled that down. And if they actually lost some of the funding, that they have, because they have been working for so long, and there is a limit, I, I have a little alarm going off in the back of my head that that might be something. I think of everything, you guys have done a remarkable job trimming the fat and that kind of stuff, this, to me, the seats there are 20 years old, okay? Having a place that is accessible to everybody, I think, is really important, and it is so well utilized, and it could be even better utilized. And, and I think that the district participating with this one project, wholeheartedly endorse it. So, thanks.
Thank you very much for that.
I probably wasn't privy to all the meetings previously with regard to the budget items, but I just wanted to know if there'd been any specific percentage increase on any salary-related items, and what they might compare with for last year.
No, like, typically, salary discussions are an in-camera item, like, we do, anything that's HR, human resource-related, does fall into, into, it, it's not a public discussion, so
But does it affect the budget?
Hmm, I don't
Through your worship, there was the three positions added to
Right.
the budget this year, and a different approach was funding those positions specifically from non-market change revenue, whereas in prior years, it was funded, non-market change revenue just went into the general pot and wasn't specifically allocated for anything. And so with our new CAO, his policy, or that he would like, is that non-market change will fund new positions over the next couple of years, until we're at our adequate staffing levels, and then it can be determined what would happen with that non-market change revenue in the future. It could be allocated to reserve contributions, et cetera, there's other options that we could use for that.
But right now, growth is funding the new positions.
Right now, that is the direction.
Right, it's not just the new positions, which I now understand, it's all the existing staff positions.
What, Mr., what, what I believe Mr. Offly is asking is just, like, salary discussions specifically for either individuals or departments, and that's where I'm saying that those conversations are, are always held in camera, and then we just report out the salaries that are 75,000 and over, and, and anything above that.
We just, we just, oh, sorry, pressing our button here, we just did a new collective agreement, that would have an impact on, on the salaries, right? But that, so there would be an increase in salary, right?
There would be, I don't recall
I was just interested to know what percentages it might be, if there was an increase, because it would affect the budget accordingly, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Through your worship, for example, like, we're, because of the union, we have a QP contract, we have IAF contracts, so there's dictated increases in those contracts, so QP for 2019, or, sorry, 2020 is 2%. IAF is still under negotiation, I believe it just expired December of 2019, so just an estimate has been included in there of 2%, whether that's accurate or not, I don't know, but we've just been budgeting for a potential increase.
So, 2%.
As far as that, and then, as you stated, there's the annual SOFI report that gets published by the end of June every year, which will indicate any salaries over $75,000.
But that also includes any paid-out vacation time, any sort of, all of that is in there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, anything to add? We have concluded this, so just in the essence of time, I'll look, there's no new business, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Moved by Counselor La Genesse, oh, Ms. Machado?
Sorry, if we could just maybe take a health break for two minutes after the adjournment, we just need to shut down the camera, switch the cameras over to a different meeting, and it'll just take about two minutes, if we can accommodate that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Oppose is carried unanimously.